We are calling the March 16th Special Meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to Order at 9:03-ish, and we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any staff announcements or agenda changes today?
None, Madam Chair, thank you.
And there are no items on the consent agenda? So we will go ahead and no regular agenda items, so we will continue with our discussion of the county zoning code update. And Gina, is Martha here today?
She is.
Okay.
Somewhere.
No public comment on our agenda today. Mr. Wooster, are you here to give general public comment or to comment on the zoning code update? Yes, thank you.
Hey, so, welcome back. It's been awhile.
Yes.
So, what you have, this lovely, large document, is all of our track changes to date. So, just as a recap, we obviously met multiple sessions over the fall, lots of vigorous discussion about the preliminary draft as a result of our discussion, and suggestions from you and the public. These are the amendments that reflect all of those discussions. For your ease, we've put them in track changes, so we can hopefully easily go through them. In addition, we had a few homework assignments that are outlined in that staff report that I provided to you, and those changes have also been rolled in to this draft that is before you today. So, as soon as you guys are ready to get going, this morning, I received some suggested amendments from Commissioner Lattish. So for your convenience, I have made copies of those, so if we so choose, we can go through them. In addition, since it was directly related to Title VI, which is animals in county code, I've also provided you a copy of Title VI. So if you want, you know, we can have a discussion of those. But just so you know, staff feels really comfortable with how our code is drafted thus far in respect to animals. It's that way for a reason. Title VI is going to be totally updated. And we were afraid to make too many specific enumerations that, you know, reiterated Title VI with the understanding that that whole code section's gonna change. So we kinda kept them generic and to a minimum intentionally. If you would like, when we get to this part, if you would like us to do some additional follow-up, and, you know, we can certainly take some additional time out to do that. That'll be up to your discretion. Otherwise, you know, our suggestion is that we don't get too deep into Title VI, and we always have an opportunity to come back after that title is actually updated. And then we can make whatever necessary changes we need to, you know, in respect to the new section of code. So it's up to you, you know, we can have that discussion when we get there. But just so you know, that's where we stand at this point.
So, I also have concerns about some of the animal sections, just not nearly as detailed as Commissioner Lattish's, but areas that I think we just need to look at and sort out a little bit more. But I'm wondering if you and Martha think we should just start through in the order of the...
I think that would be best. That way, I think it's gonna be easier to keep track of where we leave off and where we pick up again. Obviously, we are not gonna get through this entire document in one day. So that is my suggestion, is starting from the beginning and working our way through. And when we get to the section pertaining to animals, if we wanna have this further discussion, we can certainly do it. If you want Martha and I to walk it back a little bit and take some time out, it will cause a slight delay in the process, but, you know, we can go back and take another look at it. And, you know, with your direction, we can do whatever's necessary.
If I might interject, I think before we start, I'd appreciate it if we could consider my proposed new ordinance section 17.02.25, which I didn't see this covered elsewhere. This is about the top of the documents. I didn't see this covered elsewhere in the current draft. Primarily, providing that if a use is not listed in the land use regulation table, that use is not permitted in that zoning category. Example, since light industrial is not listed in Table 17.05.020 residential zones, it is not permitted use in any residential zone unless a variance is obtained.
I would actually caution against the use of a variance in that.
Okay.
Right, right.
I was wondering about that. So we just ended with residential zone?
Right, but if you will note...
Well, that's what I was hoping you'd point.
Yeah, so this land use regulation, obviously, it's not exactly verbatim in your words, but the gist of it is actually enumerated in the beginning of each land use table. They're called land use regulations. Basically, it reiterates exactly what you've said, with the exception of the option of a variance, which is not actual...
No, we don't wanna, okay?
So I think it's redundant to actually have a separate section in addition to what we've already got drafted.
Yeah, I did not notice that. Yeah, but I thought it was very important...
I agree with you.
To keep that concept in mind when we're looking, because there are things like the current... Just slipping into the animal code for just a second. The private kennels and the commercial kennels provisions in the animal code as it exists now says that they're only permitted in properly zoned areas. So unless we provide for them under the current animal code, they can't be permitted.
Right, so I think we're gonna have to, when we get to that animal section, we have to see where it has to get plugged back in in other places, if that's the solution.
It just...
So, yeah, when we get... We've basically combined private and commercial kennels. There's some problems with the current definitions, and they don't jive. It's very complicated. So for ease and clarity, we decided to basically merge and not define them separately, and then basically roll them back to... We've allowed them in certain zones with certain regulations, right? But we've also point back to Title VI indicating you need whatever necessary permit that Title VI requires you to get. So we kinda kept that very general intentionally, with the understanding, again, that Title VI is gonna be updated.
Yeah, as long as we have provision that they can be permitted.
Yes.
Under the current law.
It's in there, yes.
Commissioner Lattish, may I just beg your pardon on the point that you've made? So are you recommending this section, 17.02.25?
It's just been pointed out to me that we don't have to have it, because it's... The subject is covered.
Right.
And it's just the only question is whether it would be good to have right after the interpretation sections for the...
Yeah.
For the entire zoning code.
Right.
Whether it would be good to have a section that says that, so people don't look at the tables.
Re-processed in the table, and you're so anxious to look at the table.
Well, because unless a use is prohibited, it doesn't necessarily have to be listed as a... Permitted uses are permitted uses, but prohibited uses would identify whether or not a use is not allowed in that particular zone.
No, well, that's what brought this to my attention, is that I realized I was gonna start saying you can't have heavy industrial in a residential zone and have to list that in the under-residential, and that didn't make any sense at all. So I think we want to have our county be that it has to be listed in order to be permitted, that otherwise, all these lists are gonna be so long...
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, listing all permitted uses would be an exercise that... We can't think of all the uses that may be permitted in a particular zone, though.
Well, but unless, if they are permitted, if they're not listed, we're in big trouble.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't...
Yeah, and this is one of the reasons why in the existing code, you find this compatibility finding that the planning director has to make, that if a use is not listed as a permitted use, but if it is similar to a use that is permitted, then the director can make a compatibility finding, because...
You guys are both saying the same thing.
I think now we are.
So now we are saying, I'm just trying to understand what this is all about.
He was saying that he was not aware that it was repeated under land use regulations in each section, in each zoning section. And so he was trying to provide an overarching notice to anybody using the document that this is how to interpret this. Is there...
Right, I think Tim's just...
I don't have a problem with having an overarching, but we could put it right in with the interpretation section.
Yeah, and I think that's where he went to, where most logically he thought it should be. It wasn't there, didn't realize that we had actually referenced it in, you know, in another area of the code.
Although I probably read it eight times.
And you just kinda glaze over that.
Right, yeah. So... So I guess the question is, is it acceptable in this, you know, where we've put it? We think it is. If you think it needs to be reiterated elsewhere in the code, then, you know, we can have that discussion, but...
Yeah, I think...
I would reiterate it in the code under the rules of interpretation.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see how it quite fit as number D under that. But then there's the second part in this, is just interpreting the...
But it's much the same thing, it's like how to use the table.
Yeah, that's why I thought...
It might be that we just give it, you know, use of the tables, or put these couple of things in, making sure that the wording matches the wording you have in the other places that you mentioned these items.
Yeah.
Since you've already worked out wording that's clear. I have to admit, it's easier to find it if it's in multiple locations, because it's easy to just glaze right over what looks like boilerplate. Not that I would ever be guilty of that, but it's happened once or twice.
Okay, so I'm sorry, so the consensus is that it's gonna be also added to what section?
17.02?
Okay, and you guys can find the right spot in thinking for it.
I think we can, thank you.
But I think the subsection B that I suggested is, I don't know if that's covered in your boilerplate.
I thought it was mentioned some, I read something about it in here. I don't... But same thing, whether it is or isn't, it doesn't hurt to have it in the general instructions for use of the zone.
Okay.
Unless somebody objects. I remember a lot of people trying to look stuff up, aren't people familiar with that? Okay. We don't have to talk about the contents, do we?
Oh, table of contents.
I'm not checking the contents, I'm assuming you guys have that covered. Well, I have, on page one, I have...
So I don't know, I'm assuming you guys have additional comments that you wanna talk about, not just the track changes, so I don't know where you're starting off, so you guys just...
Page one.
Page one?
I'm thinking we leave this and we go to page one, and then as we come to the issues that are addressed.
Okay, alright. Page one it is.
Does anybody else have any comments on page one?
Go ahead.
I was just looking at B, under purpose. It says to provide a means to classify and ensure adequate development of real property in the unincorporated portion of the county, and I don't think the zoning code can do that, but I think it can ensure adequate development potential of real property in the unincorporated portion of the county.
Sounds good.
We can't force development to happen. We can just provide the land for that development to happen.
I agree.
Okay, so one more time? To provide a means to classify and ensure adequate development potential of real property in the unincorporated portion of the county. Or the potential for adequate development, I don't...
You guys can clean that sentence up. I was trying not to add a lot of words.
I'm not so sure that putting potential really makes a difference one way or the other, because what we are working with is a devolvement code, not a development potential code, or not a potential devolvement code. I think anybody who sees a zoning code understands that we do not regulate, I mean, we do not make people develop, but we're providing rules and regulations and guidelines for the potential development of land in the county. So it just seems a little redundant to me to have potential in there, because there's an understanding that it is a potential development, and we don't have a potential development code.
But the chair's point that to say we're gonna ensure adequate development is an overstatement of what we can do. We're giving a chance for adequate development, and that's, I think, potential is a good addition.
Okay, commission wins.
I'm gonna become obnoxious.
What's your opinion?
I just, under relationship to the general plan, I just think it's a tense issue. Any permit, license, or approval issues pursuant to the zoning code should be issued. I'm sorry, I don't know what happened. Kelly and Tim are both here and able to say these kind of things. I don't need to do it.
Where are you?
So, right here. Issues. Any license approved? We don't have approval issues, we have approvals issued. Are you at 17.01.04.0?
Yes.
Yes, relationship to the general plan, that section.
Issued pursuant to is a D.
And then...
It's just a title.
Would you just take the word issues out?
No, issued is a passive.
Yeah, no issues.
It has to be issued.
Issued pursuant to the zoning code must be consistent.
You missed it, Tim.
It's just a...
Strike one.
I can let anything slide, too.
See, dude, a week away from work and look what happened.
Where's Kelly Wooster when you need him?
Come on, step it up.
Then my next item is just a question. Where, the last sentence in that paragraph says that the general plan shall control when there's a conflict, but the zoning code tends to be more specific than the general plan, and the convention is that the more specific code controls, but I can see why in this case this would be it, but it's just weird.
Yeah, the general, everything in the zoning code has to be consistent with the general plan. So if somebody notices something and argues that it's inconsistent, to the extent we all agree it's inconsistent, the general plan does have to control.
Yes, see, under conflicting regulations, it says the more restrictive provisions shall control unless otherwise specified. That's what got my attention, is that we don't know which one will have the more restrictive.
But if they're...
I get it.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have anything on page two or three?
Three, I do. I don't really understand paragraph F, prior ordinance on page three, the second sentence. No provisions of the zoning code shall validate any land use or structure established, constructed, or maintained in violation of the prior zoning code unless such validation is specifically authorized by this zoning code and is in conformance with all other regulations. Is that... Give me an example of what that sentence is talking about.
It's saying that...
Talking about nonconforming? Nonconforming...
It's saying that just because there's a new code, we're not saying that anything you had before is okay, even if it didn't conform before, and it doesn't conform now. So unless specifically we made a change to make that thing okay, to make it a conforming use, or...
But in our provision for nonconforming uses, aren't we validating land use that was...
Well, then it was, if we say that, then it's specifically authorized by the zoning code.
The difference is that a nonconforming use is a use that is legal now, but might not be legal once we change. The only reason it's becoming illegal is because we've changed the zoning code.
But when we get to nonconformance, I have problems with something that is currently a nonconforming use, so it's not consistent with the current zoning code. So it would be...
That's illegal, that's not a legal nonconforming use, that's an illegal use. If they...
But, okay, going back to 1960, it was legal.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then the zoning code was amended in 1978, and it became a nonconforming use, a permitted nonconforming use. That doesn't seem to be covered here.
It is, unless such validation is specifically authorized by this zoning code and is in conformance with all other regulations. So our section that talks about that is specifically validating some of those historic...
Okay, well, then, if that's...
That's how I read it.
If that's so, fine, but I think when we get to nonconforming uses, we're gonna have to look at that carefully. Okay.
Anybody else? I have nothing on page four. What's the next page?
Page what?
Something on...
Five, 17.02?
I have something on page six.
Anybody, page five?
Page six, we're good with page five.
We're good with five?
On calendar day, should we have something in there? That sometimes an office is closed, but the county is open. Sometimes an office closes to the public before the end of office hours, and people should not be penalized if they come in after that, or if they, I'm sorry. We should take, I think we should consider having something like all references to days or the calendar days unless otherwise indicated. If a deadline falls in a weekend or holiday, or on a day when the applicable county office is closed, it shall be extended the next working day. The end of a time period shall be the close of public business for the applicable office on the last day of the period. I can read it more slowly, but just...
So the only addition was the word public in the last sentence?
No, but I'm looking for comment on the concept. People shouldn't be... Should know when this deadline really is. If it's, if a deadline falls on a Tuesday, but that office has been closed since...
In the afternoon.
Three o'clock on Tuesday, they should be on notice that they need to get there by three o'clock, not just by the time county offices generally are closing.
So we have this discussion, but we are...
I know.
Remember why.
Well, county code itself, Julia probably know off the top of her head what chapter that is. Specifically says that office hours, county office hours are, I believe it is 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
It doesn't say that.
Yeah.
I thought it was eight.
I believe it's nine, because I remember saying, wow, we open up a whole hour earlier.
I do know that in practice, different posted, but I have, I think people's posted office hours are not always the same as what the...
Well, and that to me is a bigger issue that, you know, perhaps maybe the CEO needs to enforce. All the county has, keeps the same schedule, I don't know, but I don't...
The county, all the offices don't keep the same schedule, and I don't think people should be penalized for that.
But I don't know how you enumerate everybody's individual schedule.
Commissioner Lattish, people are not penalized for that. The policy is that if a particular office closes before the official closing of county offices, that application submitted after the closure of that office the following day is recognized as being submitted on time. That's the policy. So if we close at three, and the county offices actually close at 4:30, and you came in at 4:30, and we're closed, if you come back the next day with your application, it will be considered to be filed on time, because we closed earlier than the county offices.
How would you know they made it by 4:30?
Well, they would say we were here yesterday.
Well, 4:30 is actually after the time.
So you have to just trust them.
Right.
Or the offices would have to have a drop box of some kind, where anything that was dropped through into that drop box.
Right, right. There is, I don't think there's any departments that have that drop box anywhere, so it would just have to be... Yeah, we trust you, you were here yesterday, we were closed. So same thing for a holiday. If it falls on a holiday, you come back the next day, we would honor it.
That's covered in here.
Yeah.
Tim's situation is not covered in, I know he's brought this up before. I don't know if there's some way to generically add a sentence... know if there's some way to, to generically add a sentence in there, but in some ways I think that might just confuse the issue further. We might be better off to do this, but to make sure that it's really only the planning department that matters for this.
Right.
That there's a policy in place to accept.
Okay.
I wonder if we could say, uh, or a day or time when the planning department is closed, if that would cover it.
Okay, so a weekend, holiday or a day or time.
When the planning department.
That's, that, that would work.
That's great.
For our purposes.
And the planning, planning department is the only department that gonna be covered by this, right?
Well.
I think.
For these documents.
Yeah.
Yes.
Except for.
Jump to seventeen.
Or except for seventeen ninety five, right? The cannabis, those applications. Are they coming into planning right now still? They're going to the department of cannabis as well? So that's the only one I.
Well, but planning department or other reviewing department?
Yeah. But we don't, I mean, if, if something occurs and we happen to close early, we don't necessarily post that for the public. So how is anybody supposed to know that we're not open till four o'clock on that day?
Well, that's what we're, we're saying.
But I'm saying, I'm saying though, if somebody came in and said, "I showed up at your office at three o'clock and your doors were locked", then we would know, yeah, you were right. We closed at three o'clock and we were gone for the day.
Well, that's why we're saying.
But, but I, I, I guess I just.
So they would.
How do you want it worded though? Because it, it just, I, I think we're just, I don't know, getting a little too detailed where I don't think it's necessary.
I think what Julie suggested works.
Just don't do planning, just say reviewing department.
And do we, do we need the last sentence? That the last sentence doesn't, I mean, if, if we'd make the change that Julie suggested, then I don't think we need the last sentence.
Well, it's saying it's close of business.
Right.
So that's not anywhere else in there.
That's why I put in close of public business.
But doesn't that cover no matter what time you close? I mean, if we're closed at three one day, we're closed for business. You're closed at four the next day, you're still closed for business.
I think close of business is a term of art and I, so I think we probably don't need it. I mean, I agree that if we're saying that we're going to go by the actual closing hours of a department, then end of business means something else.
It just seems like it captures it all to me.
The, the problem is that, as you pointed out, it appear, I, I think county's open hours are not uniform regardless of what the code says, which means we either need to change our ordinance or, or Teresa needs to tell people to have different open hours. But in the meantime, we don't want to penalize people. You guys have.
No.
You close at certain times. Some, certain departments, I think, have, yeah, and I, I think at one point in your department, wasn't there even a day where like, some people close at noon on a day to have staff time? And that seems to be more in flux. So this way we don't have to change the code every time the, the practice changes. Uh, and we can let people know they're not going to be penalized.
Or we ensure that there is, and, you know, barring some emergency, that there is always a way for someone to drop something off up until the close of business. But see, they used to lock the door.
So if something, something has a fee, you know?
Um, right.
Then what? Uh, how about if, if, so if the second sentence just said, "If a deadline falls on a weekend or holiday or on a day when the applicable county office is closed, it shall be extended to the next working day," or it's closed to the public? Cause there's, there's closed and there's.
Yeah, or when, when the receiving office is close to the public, it shall be.
Okay.
So, um, our building, we have absolutely no control of when those doors are opened and when they're closed. So if the doors are closed, uh, and if there's nobody inside to open it from the inside, we cannot let anybody in because it's been automatically locked. Unlike other situations whereby we may have the latitude to take a key and open the door whenever we please. So there are so many things that control how we let people in and out of that, uh, building. And I think it all has to do with security. So we have absolutely no control. If the doors are open, but we're closed, somebody can actually walk in and put something on a planning counter and walk away. But if the door is locked and we're in there and we don't know somebody's outside, they can't get in. So.
That's why I think we're saying a day when the county or receiving offices are closed. So that would cover. If you can't get in, you get till the next day.
Let's, close to the public.
Yeah, close to the.
Because there might be people in there working.
Right. I, I think that's a reasonable, and then I would keep the.
The last sentence?
Sentence, the way you guys posted.
Okay, so we're adding the word.
A day or time.
Public.
And then we're receiving to the next.
So the calendar days would read, "All references to days or to calendar days unless otherwise indicated. If a deadline falls on a weekend or holiday or a day or time when the county or receiving office.
Offices.
Offices are close to the public.
Yeah.
It shall be extended to the next working day. The end of a time period shall be the close of business on the last day of the period. Is that right?
Yes.
Yep.
And through pure coincidence, that was the only item I had marked for anything anyway. So my issues are taken care of.
Anything else on six?
Anybody else? Hi, Matt. Step one, seven. Um, it's in the section three, measurements involving a structure.
Okay.
Says, "Measures involving a structure are made to the closest support element of the structure." And that's not entirely true. That is true for the purposes of a roof overhang, but when you get further into this, a cantilevered floor, so there is no structure extending to the ground, is, still has to fall within setbacks and clearances unless it's a bay window and more than thirty inches above the floor, not the floor plate itself. So we, we just need to make sure we're, and I actually saw on social media, people discussing this issue and drafts people telling people that they could extend their floors over into the setbacks. So. So that's why it jumped out at me.
Not just academic.
That it's an area to keep, to clear up perhaps.
Do you have a suggestion? How to change it?
I, I was either limited to roofs and onings. I think we're gonna get a little further on and we're gonna, the same issue is gonna be addressed. And so maybe we can just make sure that, um, it's under the determining floor area. So whatever our intent wants to be, but I think we want it to be accessories and roof overhangs, not, cause there, it is possible structurally to extend a long ways with a cantilever.
So you really need to, need another picture. Another illustration.
Well, I think what's here is fine. It's just that that this closing support element of the structure.
Yeah, but.
But so what is a support element? Maybe that could be taken care of by a structure, a support element could be a beam.
Yeah.
And so then this would be fine.
As long as everyone understands that.
Exactly. So it's just that we need to define it. We're not talking about something extending to the ground.
Right.
Okay, in the, the picture that's at one o'clock down here of the four pictures is, I think, an illustration of what they're talking about. If you just put a cantilevered thing out there, then the X would be to the edge of the cantilever.
Right.
So.
Yes, you could incorporate that into that drawing.
So that's a clarifying question. Your concern with it being to the support element is because somebody might say, oh, you can do a cantilever into a setback. Is that?
Exactly.
Right.
So, but what the setback says is that required setbacks must be open from the ground up. So even if this measurement of a structure, it doesn't say structures have to be setback. It says, and what, we can look at the encroachment into setbacks section, but that talks about what can encroach into a setback. So I don't think this causes a problem for that setback thing because the setbacks clearly establish what can and cannot be in that setback.
Okay.
Well, but if, if indeed on social media, people are already saying, you can do this.
These terms are existing.
People say a lot of them.
Don't read social media.
Truthfully, there are jurisdictions that allow that and the building code allows it into building code clearances up to a third of that clearance. And so there's always confusion between the building code set, which are not called setbacks, um, and planning setbacks.
So if that's, if, if that is made very clear under the setback section of what can be allowed in the setback, then are you okay with the language as it's written? It sounds fine.
That sentence says, "Measurements involving a structure are made to the closest support element of the structure, including a supporting beam on a cantilevered section."
Yeah, I think maybe we just come back to that after we look at the other sections and see.
If it kinda all rolls in and makes sense.
Clarity in there.
Since we're on this subject, do we wanna jump there real quick?
Well, that's a good idea. Setbacks in definition or?
Um, no. I think we're gonna jump to setbacks real quick. Thanks Martha. Martha's getting it.
It's page two sixty-three.
And two sixty-four, yeah.
We are really jumping ahead.
And, and it says what Martha says, that it will be kept clear from the ground upwards.
I think, I think whatever's the, the most user friendly and perhaps something that on page seven that would give people a, uh, a, a notice that they better look back at the, uh, at the definition of setback.
It is interesting to think about user friendliness because truthfully, I think the section we're in is the least used section. And so when people look at the zoning code, typically, um, they're not kinda reading it through. So they're like, well, what are my setbacks? What can encroach? What uses can I have? And they tend to go to those sections first, kind of versus how are things interpreted or measured?
But then, then of course we have to consider people who do mess up and they want to find some language in the code that can support their position. They could use this, they could use this, uh, language in their arguments. So I, I, I agree, that's not, that's past user friendly, that's, that's user defiant.
I guess I'm just pointing out why, um, some of these things that you looked at were in this section. People, other users may not look there first because they're not taking the code and reading it, kind of like how you are through your review. They're like, "I'm in residential zone, what can I do?" And so they'll look first at the land use table versus looking at interpretations. How do I interpret the land use table? So that's just, um, we do think about user friendliness. It is different for different users though, or how it's being used.
What's your, your concern? What?
So what I don't see actually clarified in any of these pieces is whether or not roof overhangs can extend into the setback area, which traditionally we have allowed in Hillbears County.
Yeah, ground, ground upward.
Ground upward would preclude that and it doesn't, I see no exception.
Yeah.
It says on number one, A, eaves and overhangs.
Yeah.
May project up to one-third the required setback.
One A? Where?
Right, on eighty-six.
On eighty-six.
See?
Whole different area. We're not looking at that page. I knew I read it somewhere. Okay, setback requirements, right. Roof elements over eaves and overhangs. So it is there, but it's but it. The definition just defines what a setback is.
Right, and that's what definitions do. We don't put standards in definitions. We put the standards in the standards.
Got it. So I think that this could be resolved on page seven by simply including a reference to seventeen sixteen oh eight oh setbacks.
So you'd add to that first sentence, subject to section so and so.
Right.
Right. I like that.
Whatever wording you guys.
Okay, I like that.
Good.
Better.
Well, just for clarification, I'm still trying to understand what this specific measurement is. Is this a measurement between two structures or? Because if it's just a measurement of involving a structure, the reference point should be the property line. So I, I'm totally mystified as to what this particular measurement is.
It's the distance between the property line and the over, or roof overhang.
Between buildings.
Or something on the structure.
Okay, so, so the reference point should be the property line?
No, it's for any measurement on the site. Could be between two structures.
Where does it?
It's not always going to be to a property line. It could be to an easement. It could be to a creek. It could be anything.
So when you're, I mean, it, this is just, it's, the measurement ends at the structure at what point? That's what the, that's what this section is.
Yeah. The other thing we're not even.
No.
True. I think that takes care of it though. It gives people a hand.
My next thing's on page nine.
I, I have just a question on page eight and nine about measuring height of decks. And my, the only reason I'm asking is do we have a provision somewhere that the height of decks is important to? of decks is important to? There's some stuff in the new fire.
Handrails, maybe?
Not in the zoning code.
Okay.
So I just was curious why we had it in there. I don't object to having it there. I just, I think it is gonna come into play in future, really, regulations, so.
Yeah, right now, I, I.
Nothing came to mind.
No, no.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on page eight or nine?
Yeah, page nine on lot depth. Lot depth is measured along a straight line, and I would eliminate the word "down." There's no reason for that since it's already established in the previous thing that you measure these horizontally. I think that could give a
Yeah.
misleading idea.
Where are we?
D two.
D, measuring lot depth, D two.
What is it that, what is it that you wanted?
I'd just take the word "I'm down from."
Not really measuring "down," it depends on.
Oh, down.
Straight line from the midpoint. Anything else? Page ten, we have only.
Yeah, page ten, I have.
Two hundred and seventy-six pages.
Uh, a couple weeks. F on page ten, um, I, I just don't understand the "and/or" the center line of interior walls. When you're using that as your floor area?
Townhouses.
Okay, so we're talking about party walls then? The walls, is that a, is that a term of art, or I just come up with?
Party walls. I don't know if it's a term of art, it's a common.
I mean, we can say, or the center line of interior walls shared by two.
When you're wondering where you're wondering what is the floor area of a retail store, you know, maybe there's one building that has multiple uses in or something, or you're looking at the square footage of the kitchen, which is something else. It's just if there's some floor area where you're diving up an interior one, you're going to the center line of the interior wall.
Figuring capacity is one, you know, you don't figure, when you're figuring out the capacity of a building, there's certain rooms that could be excluded in that calculation.
So this isn't.
For occupancy.
Yeah.
This provision, the center line of interior walls, it doesn't only apply when there're different tenants on either side of the wall or different.
That's the most common thing, but like, I, I used to come in regularly and argue that I didn't have to include the public toilet rooms and the janitor's closet and what.
If it's a church, it would be the pulpit.
Determining for parking purposes, because nobody was gonna be eating in the janitor's closet.
I defer to the architect in the room. Is this, is this clear enough to you?
It's clear enough, and whether it's, the centers are reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
Is there an opportunity for public comment?
Sure, didn't realize you were on there.
Oh, hi, I'm Tom Anfisino, I'm here. Um, when we spoke of measuring lot depth under D two, um, could we, I, I think I'm understanding it because a lot of the properties in Calaveras County are sloped, and so, um, sometimes a misinterpretation is that people think, well, twenty-five feet to my property line is, I pace off twenty-five feet on this sloped piece of ground, and that's twenty-five feet. And I believe that lot depth here is talking about the horizontal distance, you know, not the, not the hypotenuse of the right triangle, but the leg of the right triangle.
Well, that's, but that's.
Correct, that's why we took "down" out.
And it's covered, it's covered in seventeen point oh, two point oh, three oh, what is it?
What I was wondering is if we, I, I like this, I really like this graphic you have here that depicts what's happening on a flat. I was wondering if we could get a profile, another, an additional sort of profile, um, sort of a side view to, to depict that what we're talking about is that hundred-and-eighty-degree line, not the.
You know, it comes up.
It is on page seven.
On page, on page six.
Okay.
Uh, B two says distances are measured horizontally. When determining distances for setbacks or structure dimensions, all distances are to be measured along a horizontal plane on the appropriate line, edge of building, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, these distances are not measured by following the topography or the slope of the land, and then.
Okay.
Then the, there's a picture on page seven that, that.
Just what you were asking for.
Indicates that.
So, picture on page seven?
The, the one with the, the two buildings.
The little elevation.
The X.
Oh, 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 I, I got you. Okay, good. Okay, great. Thank you.
Combination of those two, I think, what's that?
Thank you. Thank you.
So I, I assume we should make it clear to the public in the room.
Yes.
That whenever there's something you want to comment on, you can jump in.
Or you're gonna be here for a long time.
You might have a more general comment.
A couple days to get to your point.
You could go like, you're missing a period.
I, I did have a number of comments, but, um, most of them involve pages that are towards the back.
Ah.
Um, I did have some on page two, but we passed that. We have to leave anyway, um, for another commitment, so I think I'll have to share my comments at another time because I think you folks are gonna be at this for a while.
Yes, and for the record, would you like to state your name?
Commissioner Wooster.
Commissioner Wooster, previous Commissioner Wooster. I guess you get to keep the dial. What, what was it on page two? I'm just curious.
Oh, okay, on page two, I'm on my notes here. Okay, there were two things that, that bothered me a little bit. On seventeen point oh, one point oh five oh, applicability in subpart B, minimum requirements, um, it says whether zoning code provides for more discretion on the part of a county official or body, that discretion may be exercised to impose more stringent requirements than set forth in the zoning code, as may be necessary to promote moderately low-use development in the purposes of this code. And it seemed to me that's pretty overbroad and a little bit vague, and I think people ought to be able to rely on the zoning code as written and not have to worry about this kind of open-ended ability of a county official to say, no, I, I think we need a more stringent requirement than what's set forth here. That, that concerns me.
I think the intent is only when there is a discretionary permit that involved.
It's a condition.
Conditions of approval. So that probably should be clarified, though.
Well, I read it to me, and they could just go beyond what's in the zoning code.
Well, I think there are places in the zoning code where it says that.
Something is out there.
That there's, that the discretion of the, uh, planning director, something else can be done.
Why don't we say, for discretion to impose additional conditions?
Yeah.
We could just, that could clarify.
Just clarifying that it's when the zoning code is, is providing for a discretionary approval or for discretion to be exercised, like where the planning director gets to say whether or not something is a similar use.
Also developing CCO mitigation measures. We have discretion to develop them. We have to do so in compliance with state law, but the actual mitigation measures are discretionary.
But I think, I think that this sentence, its first, um, phrase covers it. Where the zoning code provides for more discretion on the part of a county official or body, then.
But we could put, i.e., discretionary permits, some other example, and make, that it's not just that you can't gen, that the code is saying, oh, you can generally ask for whatever you like.
Well, there's also other state laws that would make it difficult for us to just unilaterally come up with specific additional requirements. There's uniformity in zoning rules and all of that.
Exactly. But I think we could probably clarify that, not get people's hats up.
Yeah, I think my concern was amplified by the first sentence that says that provisions of the zoning code shall be minimum requirements. And when we put the two together, it looks like, okay, uh, the code says, um, you have to do this, but I have discretion to require more, even where it doesn't say that.
How about if we eliminated the first sentence, and said where the zoning code specifically provides for more discretion on the part of a county official or body, et cetera, et cetera?
The only thing is the code might not specifically say thou shalt develop CCO mitigation measures. So specifically to cause problems in areas under state law where you have discretion, but I, I don't see a need for the first sentence.
Yeah, that's a pretty typical, um, line in any kind of code or regulation like this. Trying to clarify that you can go above and beyond. It's not telling you that's what it has to be, it's just the minimum requirement. I, I don't know if that's, I think most people understand that. I don't feel strongly about the first sentence one way or the other, other than that I can see how, probably reading them together, they.
I see your concern.
I do, I do think that in, whether it's here or in the uncodified findings, when you adopt any zoning regulation, there is a requirement that you say this is necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare. That can get put in an uncodified finding when we adopt the entire amendment, or we can say it there. Um, I mean, that is a thing. It's not made-up words. It is sort of the basic structure. You're right, it's a basic structure of the zoning code.
I think as long as, correct me if I'm wrong, as long as it's clearly understood that this is relative to discretionary permits, then are we okay?
I think there are some, some provisions in here that, that you were referring to earlier, uh, you know, if, if a use is similar to something that is permitted and this sort of thing, that, that there, I think there are provisions in here providing for discretion of the planning director that aren't directly.
Tied to a permit.
A permit.
I think, language specifically provides for, and, and perhaps, you know, referring to conditions.
Mm-hmm.
Or mitigations might make it clear that this is not just like, planning director gets to say, I really wanted to see a different kind of project there.
Well, I, I would think it would be obvious that where the planning director has the authority to impose conditions, by definition, he's doing something that's not already there.
Right.
And if that's all this means, that's fine.
Right.
Um, but I certainly didn't read it that way.
That's all it means.
In fact, I, when I think about it, I'm not sure you need be at all, to tell the truth. If, if you're really talking about imposing conditions, it will, that would be resolved by whatever specific provision is grounding the discretion.
I think you're right. I mean, certainly we don't want to keep minimum requirements as the title, even though the title doesn't make any difference, substantive.
Right, I, I, I think I have the right analogy for this, Kelly. And, and so, when we, uh, when we have AUPs, we route them for a special event. Let's take a special event, for example. For special events, we don't specifically, specifically lists what those conditions are in the zoning code. So we route them out to the EMA, Public Works, et cetera, et cetera. EMA comes back, and they tell us that you need to provide the following things. So, and those following things may be over and beyond what one would normally think, uh, based on their assessment of this, of, of, of the special event. So I think that is what this, uh, particular thing is, is related to. So if you're gonna have a special event that's gonna bring a thousand people, uh, expect EMA to go over and beyond their regular, provide part-of-parties and, and, and so on and so forth. They may require more, more, more stringent, uh, conditions to mitigate any, what, what they might consider to be, uh, potential issues with, with that event. So that is what I think this section is talking about.
Yeah, but you and I have a suggestion.
But since the, 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 the second sentence requires the zoning code to provide for this, I think, uh, the suggestion that B is not necessary is a good one. Where, where we find it in here that the discretion is given to the, uh, planning director, planning director obviously has it, so, uh.
We could keep it and just not call it minimum requirements, call it discretionary actions, and then that would make it clear that those are the only things we're talking about. Because minimum requirements sounds like you're talking about the entire zoning code.
But do we need the first sentence then? What, what?
I think so, because it says your discretionary action is probably not gonna make your requirement, well, it could make it less stringent.
So, any zoning code, even a non, like a ministerial zoning code requirement, a non-discretionary, still has to meet the.
Right.
Health, safety, welfare standard.
Yeah.
And so we want, so there, I think the purpose of it was to declare, everything in here is necessary for public health, safety, and welfare. And beyond that, if it's a discretionary approval, we can go beyond, and so I, I, I mean, I'm not a member of the commission, so I'm not gonna give an opinion about it.
Oh, hell.
So, uh, one more, one more clarification, Commissioner Lattish. So if we go to D seventeen zero one zero five zero, so even if the planning director or anybody else comes up with this more stringent requirement, D tells us that whatever, you know, requirements are provided that are conflicting, we cannot, it cannot, whatever we impose cannot supersede, uh, anything that the board, a supervisor, a state, or any federal agency that has to tradition by law over uses and development authorized by the zoning code. So we still have a higher standard to achieve. So I cannot come up with an, with a, a, a more stringent requirement that is not consistent with the direction of the board, the state of California, or federal law. So there's still a cap. Uh, you're not gonna have a, a situation whereby, uh, you know, you, you have this requirement that is totally out of, out of control.
You'd, I mean, you could be out of control.
That's, that's what the concern is.
No, not, not under D.
Is that this allows that, that discretion to occur.
Not under D, though. I'm talking about section D.
This, but let's, does the planning commission feel that we should rename it from minimum requirements to, to something else that makes it clear that it's discretionary?
If we're gonna keep it, yes. I certainly don't have a problem with it.
Okay. How does everybody and council feel about striking the provisions of the zoning code shall be minimum requirements for the promotion of public health?
I think we can strike that because we're not contesting that that's the purpose of the zoning code.
Right.
Is to promote public health, safety. We're saying minimum requirements, which is the, uh, I think the, the issue that's very aptly put forward.
Yeah, I think that's covered plenty of places. So is everybody okay with just getting rid of that? How do you feel?
Works for me.
Okay, then.
Excuse me, what, what are we getting rid of? What are we getting rid of again? I'm, I'm not so clear.
First sentence.
The, the provisions of the, okay, right.
So it'll just be discretionary approvals without the first sentence, and everything else will stay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Discretionary action.
What does only code provide?
Actions. I wrote actions, but I don't care what you call it.
I can make one suggestion.
Please.
On the second sentence where it says this zoning code provide for more discretion. On the second sentence where it says this zoning code provide for more discretion, I would strike the more.
Okay, it'd strike more.
And then it goes on, on the part of a county official or body, that discretion may be exercised to impose additional conditions. Or conditions additionally to those set, then set forth in the zoning code, which I think makes it very consistent with what the planning director explained this is about.
Conditions or more stringent requirements may be necessary. That would be fine. I think that's a good, and it gets the conditions in there.
Yeah. Okay, well, we've got about two minutes. We've got to go. The only other one I had was on D, the very last phrase where there's a conflict between the provisions of the code and then the other county ordinance, et cetera. The more restrictive provisions shall control. I'm not so sure that that's, that's a good thing. It seems to me that the, the normal rules of construction and interpretation of statutes and regulations are to control. And, and what you look to is, you know, what's the reasonable interpretation and what are the purposes of the various provisions and what makes the most sense? And to simply have a blanket, we're going to impose whatever most restrictive, seems to me not to make a lot of sense. And that's all I had as far as the commission had gotten in this document. And we, we, we gotta go.
Commissioner Worcester, Commissioner.
Thank you for raising.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Worcester, is it possible to have your comments on those other sections in writing, perhaps, in case you may not want to be here on the day that, that section is discussed? It would be considered the same way in writing as if you were in the audience.
That will be more possible when I get to the point.
I understand.
If we provide you with a secretary.
Okay.
Well, you, you know where you are. You'll see how far we got today. You'll know when to come back.
I, I may come visit again.
You know how we are. We're extraordinarily thorough.
I would have to add that the type we recant on page one, that was going to be one of my comments.
And we believe you.
Thank you.
So we're, we're back on page.
I don't, I don't know what we.
Ten, right?
Well, on page two, we didn't resolve the more restrictive, did we?
Yeah, I think we.
Can we keep it?
That is the standard for any kind of regulation, but it does say unless otherwise specified. So I think that leaves room.
Yeah, okay, great.
And we've already talked about that there's discretion in these things.
Okay.
I, I see the issue, but I don't think it's likely. I think it's better for people to believe that it's always going to be the most restrictive. And if we can provide relief, we, great.
Okay.
We could, I, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud. We could say unless other way, unless the context so requires.
That, that would be good. I like that. Yeah, I like it. All right. Do you?
Yep.
How about you guys?
I'm sorry, what was my own words? The context?
So, so requires.
Require.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Okay.
Okay, on page ten, I, I don't understand the bay windows provision.
The what?
The bay windows, uh, to be toward the bottom of the page, page ten. Okay. Would you like to?
Yeah, it's just saying that it can't, if the floor plate can't extend out and not be counted, a bay window isn't part of floor because the, the bottom of the window, the sill of the window is at least thirty inches above the floor, so it's, so it's not, it doesn't get counted into the floor.
So a projection that's the shape of the bay window, but extends to the floor area is not a bay window.
Is a bay window if it extends to the floor. Right, it's not a bay window.
Well, then, then, then if it extends to the floor.
It gets counted.
It gets counted. Well, then I don't think that's taken into account here. Oh, lowest surface of the projection on the finished floor is thirty inches.
If it's thirty inches, or great, see? Yeah, got it.
Okay.
That's so, every garden window doesn't have to be counted.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Good.
But you notice I marked it too, as, oh, is that the best wording? But then it does make sense.
And I have to, have to. I, I very much commend Gina and Martha on the, the illustrations. I mean, like the, the floor area ratio.
Very nice.
That's really good. I one time tried to figure that out under the current zoning code and I.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
I want to say one global thing before I forget about it. I had it in my notes is there are very few places where it says city and it should say county in here. So maybe just a search and replace to make sure it looks like it's like been taken from something else. It.
Oh.
So if you just search for them and make sure that if it says city, your intention was for it to say city.
You're really coming along on this.
Taking Kelly's spot.
Few days off and look what happens.
Uh, page twelve?
Yes. Anybody?
And this applies to, they'll come up later in, in the various tables. Since we call it a street side yard setback and a front yard setback, I just, I think there should be some indication that's front yard setback applied to a situation where there is a road or street, correct? And that's, that's what makes it a front yard setback?
It says that right here, corner lot. The front of a lot is the narrowest dimension of the lot with street frontage.
Mm-hmm.
And a front yard setback is defined. So there's a definition for, for, for that reference point.
Setback thing we were looking at earlier. A front setback stands across the front of the lot for the whole width, blah, blah, blah.
Should, should there be, just in the diagram, should there be an indication that there's a street or road on both the side and the front? Or you think that textual description is enough?
So you just want it to say.
You want a, the illustration of a, of a corner lot?
Doesn't have to be, you don't have to draw a picture of the road, but I mean, just the, there's a, a, just a word out there that indicates that there's a road or street. Maybe nobody else has that problem.
Maybe just adding the word street, which says front.
Front street property line. Yeah, it's kind of an awkward. And on this, if we could just rotate the text so that it reads the other way, the convention is, is to read the other way.
I was going to say that.
What, what, you mean, rotated?
These should just be rotated one eighty, the two up and down, because the convention is to turn your head this way to read, not this way. That's a really, maybe.
Just turn the diagram.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
So this, the text should be rotated one eighty. So you read it by turning your head this direction, not this direction.
Which text?
The text that, that's the vertical text.
Oh, the vertical text. Just, just the vertical text. So you're not rotating the other.
No, 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 just the text so that it, so that it reads the way we expect text to read.
In that case, I could say front property line on road.
But, but also, if you, if you turn the sheet horizontally, you can actually, if you turn the sheet this way, it actually reads properly.
But that's not the.
That's not a conventional. I get it. I get it. So it's just.
I agree. Usually you would turn them this way if you were going to do it.
But.
But you're right. Depends which way you feel like turning them.
Then the text, front property line, isn't along the front property line.
Yes, it is. It stays right where it is. It just rotates a hundred and eighty degrees.
The text.
Hundred and eighty.
Just the text.
That's the text, not, not the diagram.
So that when you turn your page like this, it reads properly. It's upside down now.
Oh.
Now are you getting it?
God.
It's, you know, pops are so good. Gabriel tried to show us, but he, but he rotated it. Yeah, unusual direction.
Absolutely. Yeah, I just, you know.
Okay. Cool.
All right. So we're okay, we're okay with adding streets somehow into the description on that line? I, I have nothing on page thirteen. Do you have something on page thirteen? No?
I have a lot of scratching.
Oh, okay.
I have lots of spreadling and asterisks that don't mean anything.
No, I'm exercising self-control here. What's it now? I have nothing on fourteen.
I have me either, or, or fifteen.
Well, fifteen.
Do you have something?
I do have something. For parcels containing two or more zoning districts, the applicable regulations for each zone shall apply. What is it? Each zone shall apply to its area?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Each respective zone?
Yes.
To each respective zone, yes.
That's a good.
Yes.
And I questioned this when I saw it because I thought we were eliminating split zoning, but I assume we still have some places.
We still do.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe one day.
Probably not in my lifetime.
Gina, you heard that suggestion?
Um.
At respective zone?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Do you have anything on page sixteen, anyone?
No.
I, I just had a question and I'm probably a little confused here. Under ag preserve, the second sentence, agriculture preserve zoning applies to lands for which a Williamson Act contract has been executed. I thought we were talking about making some kind of changes because it's not required for those to be. It's possible to have an ag preserve zoning that doesn't have a Williamson Act. I'm sorry. I think this is a old snarl that we had, right?
It is. But right now, our existing resolution requires us to redraft. So I, what I would recommend is that if and when we change our resolution, we update the zoning code accordingly.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So for now, I think it's just best to leave it. We'll figure out what we want it to look like. Yeah.
Okay, page seventeen.
Now, I assume that with the amendments from last time, we no longer have provisions for small residential care facilities, supportive housing and transitional housing on, under residential uses for resource zones. Is that correct? Looks to me we have P under AP is all crossed out. So there'd be no, nothing.
Right.
Okay. That follows over, I'm not sure what's going on at the top of this stage, but we certainly have crossed that. Okay. So, page eighteen?
Comment? Public comment? I'm a little confused about what happened to the timber preserve area and the residential care, supportive housing, transitional housing. I remember having this discussion and, and I thought that you could only, it says, and there's a reference here to what you, what we said, small residential care facilities and transitional and supportive housing constitute a residential use. And so they're going to those restrictions that apply to other residential uses of the same, of the same type in the same zoning district. So have we determined then that, that they're not even going to be required, allowed a use permit, even though we can do, even though the, that a single family dwelling is a permitted use? We can do that?
I think we didn't have a choice, right? That, I think this is a Martha question.
Yeah.
Right. So this, the, the small residential care facility supportive housing, that's just what state law says. So it's not really a choice.
So, no, it, so it's not a permitted use in the zone then? In the TP, wherever, or is it?
We've allowed, yes, it's permitted.
What?
It's permitted into AP, but not in TP.
Well, that's, that's what it was in the first draft. If I'm reading this correctly.
So there's, if we take out all of those Ps, I think what Mr. Amfassino was saying is it doesn't look like we're allowing it anywhere.
That's correct. Under.
Okay.
And that's. And that's.
But we have to allow it any place that we allow.
Right.
Residential.
Same thing.
We just need, so it's whether we.
I'm, yeah, I, I guess I misunderstood. I thought we were going to require a use permit for everything that's a residential designation, because that was the only way we could restrict small residential care, supportive and transitional.
No, that's not what, that's not what we ultimately decided.
There's also some state law that requires us to, there are certain types of housing where we're not allowed to require a conditional use permit based on new state housing laws. I don't know, I, I can't sit here and remember whether these fit into that, but.
It seems like we should keep the list of items and the wording that says, that states small residential care facilities and blah, 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 there, because it looks like we're saying, no, you can't have them, although right above we are saying you can have housing. And so it's just confusing. I think our intent is to just say, yes, they're allowed because, and this is the reason why.
Yes.
Well, if they're allowed, we need to state that in the various columns.
Yeah.
So.
But I'm remembering this conversation differently, I guess. My notes reflected that what we talked about was you have two choices. One is you can allow it unrestricted. So if you allow single family dwelling units, uh, are, are permitted use in the zone, then you have to allow small residential supportive and transitional housing without any other conditions. And we thought that that was not a good idea in the, for example, the timber preserve zone.
No, I thought, I think, excuse me, I think you thought it wasn't a good idea, but I don't believe that was the consensus of the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was. I thought that we were going to, okay. That's disappointing. I, I missed, I thought, I thought we understood that it was not a good idea to have some of these housing uses in the timber preserve zone, where it's high fire area, where there's parcels that are very distant from emergency services, where there's, uh, uh, some of these populations are maybe difficult to evacuate, if it's developing disabled folks.
So state law, most of the time, just my general understanding, when it requires certain types of housing, requires them, and it doesn't define this well. It says in residential zones. And I, I don't, if I remember correctly, the. if I remember correctly, the definition, there wasn't a set definition of residential zones. And so I think to a certain extent it's left to us to determine whether the TP zone is considered a residential zone for some of these.
Well, that's a different, so, sorry to interject, but that's, that's different. So the residential zones, housing provisions are different than what this is.
Okay.
So when we last came here, we did have Ps throughout for the, you know, we had these uses listed as permitted. And there was some reservation about that, because, and the discussion was, well, it's okay if it's a house, but we don't want, we're more concerned with these, these type of group housing things. So having the P in there gave this impression that you can just come in and do a residential care facility, which the idea is more, you can have a house, and if you put a residential care facility in that, we understand that the state says we have to allow you to do that. So that's why we amended this to take the Ps out, so it doesn't look like do you want transitional housing?
It's a standalone use.
You've included PPZ. The idea is, you can have a single-family dwelling in TPZ, and then if you want to do a residential care facility, within that, we understand that state law says we have to treat you the same as that single-family dwelling.
So with, with that.
I think.
So with that, I think Tom's concern is, with that understanding, do we want to permit single-family dwellings in the TP zone?
Right, and so we also did talk about requiring a use permit for that, which you can do, but then if, if somebody does a house, and then they want to do transitional housing within that house, you cannot require a use permit for that transitional housing.
Right.
That house is there, the transitional housing is like, you moved your family in, it's, it's no different than a single-family house. So that was the thing, you can't backdoor require a use permit for that transitional or supportive housing. You can require a use permit for the single-family dwelling, but you can't require it for the transitional or supportive housing.
I, I think, and I could, and I, and my suggestion would be that that's exactly what we should do. And the use permit could reflect the concerns we have for the, for anybody living out there, namely, let me, some suggestions, for example, a use permit would consider the emergency response time to the place, because that's a factor in, in the TPZ zone, emergency response times are long. You, you would consider the emergency responder capacity in a, in a use permit. Some of the emergency responders out there are not that well-equipped to deal with some of the emergencies, you know, their volunteer fire departments without a, without a, you know, medically trained person. Distance from a highway suitable for emergency evacuation. You know, if we're going to have people, whether it's a residence or a family daycare, or a supportive housing, transitional housing, we want them to be in a place where they can get out in the event of emergency. We want to, we want to have conditions on access to the site when it's in use. In the TPZ zone, there are some places you can't get to in the winter. Some of those TPZ lands are only accessible based on contracts with the Forest Service to get to those and, and some, and the Forest Service often has those roads closed during the winter time. Also, because it's in the TPZ, the effect of the residents on timber production and timberland conservation, which is the primary purpose of the TPZ, the effect on fuel and fire management.
I think we have the point.
Yeah.
So there's a number of, of conditions that we could put on these residences to make that, whether they're individual residences or any of the other supportive, transitional, or daycare-type situations, that would be appropriate in the TPZ.
Right, so if you could, the county could require a use permit for the single-family dwelling, they could not invoke conditions because it's supportive housing. So you couldn't say, well, this is going to be a group housing, so we need to do these extra conditions. You could say for a single-family dwelling, so you just, if you want to go down that route, you can, but you just have to be careful in moving forward, you're not making any decisions based on the fact that it's a supportive or transitional housing. You're not treating that single-family dwelling any different than you would if it were for, say, you building it for yourself.
For the sake of discussion.
Let, let, let me break in for a second. I'm concerned that if indeed, if we permit single-unit dwelling detached in the TP zone, then if we do that, it seems to me we could probably make that subject to administrative use permit.
That's what he's saying.
Right, right.
You know, but once that is done, these other facilities
are allowed by right.
Are allowed by right. And if that's so, then we should reflect on this chart that they are. You know, because we are proceeding under the the condition that if a use is not listed, that use is not permitted. So.
So I have another question, so in the AP zoning, if it's under the Williamson Act, does the Williamson Act allow you to have a residential care or transitional and supportive housing facility on it?
No.
So are we putting another can of worms here?
No, it does not, because the, the, for the, for the Williamson Act, you can only have things that are related to agriculture, and nothing that would be construed to be commercial in nature. So, but back to the point that Commissioner Ladish made, and to the point that Mr. Infusino is making. His point is, he wants us to be able to regulate the use, that, the uses that are not specifically single-family and residential, because if you bring a residential care facility, for obvious reasons, he wants to make sure that certain things are in place that would, that would allow for emergency response, et cetera, et cetera. So if we made single-family in a TP zone to be subject to some kind of use permit, those things may not necessarily be what we will be looking at for a single-family house, you know, regular mom and pop and kids. However, no, no, safety issues would not be a concern, because it would be, it would be our safety issues. But when it comes, when it becomes a community care facility or something along those lines, those safety issues are more prominent and they're more necessary than.
I'm, Miller say that the state doesn't allow us to think about anything other than whether a house could be allowed there. And so if we're doing a CUP, it would be a CUP for a house, we don't get to do special conditions based on whether that house might become.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm asking is, under CEQA, with the understanding that these other supportive-type housings could be allowed, would we be required to analyze it under CEQA?
Hear, hear me out.
With a, with a use permit?
The, the point, the point I'm making is this. When we analyze a single-family, even if we say it's CUP in a TP zone, we are not anticipating that this single-family residential property is going to become a residential care facility. Therefore, those concerns that he's making are not going to be analyzed in, 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 in making a determination whether or not you allow or don't allow it.
I think the question is, do we have to? With, with the understanding that we don't have the ability to further regulate whether or not it gets converted into a residential care facility, do we, under CEQA, are we required to analyze those impacts? And if the answer is no, then you have to stop and think, well, then what are we really accomplishing by requiring a use permit for a residence if the intent is to further ensure safety and concerns and whatever with a residential care facility?
Well.
If the residential care facility is off the board, then we're only talking about a residence, then what are we really trying to regulate?
Has no play in this game anyway, that's not, that's not a CEQA issue. The point I'm trying to make is this. The concerns that Infusino, the concern that Infusino has will not be addressed by making a single-family residential use in a TP zone discretionary. That is the point I'm trying to make.
But I think, I think they can, I think they can be addressed.
So I actually.
Because I think.
It's worthy of research.
Yeah.
It's worthy of further research.
You could require the residents be nearest, the nearest street, or you could, you know, this sort of, I mean, it's, it's the same concerns.
Right.
Are involved, it's a different, you know.
Because then, because then the question becomes, do you want to allow residential?
Response time.
Something, we shouldn't take, have a blank here.
Well, I mean, take, well, well, take for example, well, take for example, response time for emergency calls. Has that ever been a, an issue used to determine whether or not you could locate a residential, a residential use on a property? But that, when it becomes, when it becomes a residential care facility, it is an issue for a single-family residential home, it is not necessarily an issue.
Certainly present in the general plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's.
So it sounds like we need to do a little bit further research.
Yeah, one is, I mean, if the concern, one question I think that Mr. Infusino is raising is, do we want a CUP for any type of residential care whatsoever, or any type of residential use in a TP zone? That's a separate question, okay? And then another question would be, if we do make a residence a discretionary approval in the TP zone, would our CEQA analysis need to, does it exempt any, the potential, do we have to look at the potential for it to become one of these more intensive housing types? But, so I can research that regardless, but I think there's also a question, a baseline question also of whether you, you would want to allow a use permit, or require a use permit for a residential use in TP. That's a separate policy question for you.
Right, right.
Well, I think for each of those columns, you have to make that decision about whether it makes sense or not, and then I mean, for each of them, so RA, you're certainly not going to require a use permit to have a residence in RA.
No.
Kind of.
Right.
Right?
I, I think there was a third question, and this was the one that Martha raised last time, and she raised it again this time. Where we presume that any zone that allowed a single-family unit was, by definition, a residential zone. And, and therefore the state law requiring the availability for family daycare and residential care and supportive housing, transitional housing kicked in.
It's not about the residential zone.
No, I, I understand what you're, I do understand what Mr. Infusino is saying.
I don't think that's the issue, it's not whether it's a residential zone, it's whether a zone allows a residence.
Allows, that's what, okay, so we're clear on this? Okay, good.
Are we clear on that? I mean, is that?
Yes.
That.
I think Martha is nodding vigorously.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
So if that's true, if, if it's going, and this is sort of what I was trying to say before, but probably didn't say it correctly. So if by allowing houses in any way, shape, or form in, in TP were thereby designating TP as a residential zone, what I'm hearing, Martha, are you of the opinion?
It's a matter whether it's called a residential zone, it's a zone that allows.
Yeah, you're not, yeah.
Maybe.
Forget about residential zone.
Right.
It's just a residential use.
Right, okay.
Okay, and then once we do that, if we do that, assuming that we allow, allow a residence in TP under a AUP, say.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah, then it seems to me we, we do need to have some listings for small residential care facilities, supportive housing, and traditional housing. What we're going to list under that would be, it would have to be, I don't know, I don't.
So just to clarify, I think you, I think you're interpreting this paragraph as these aren't listed, these are listed.
Right.
So these are listed the way it's presented here.
We just need to.
To be listed, you don't have to have a square with a P.
Okay, okay, so then, then it's, it's just a matter of, of understanding the text that you've provided with this.
If, I believe if we come up with, if we do decide to make a CUP required, we would probably list CUP in a square next to residential, supportive, and transitional. No, you can't do that, can't do that. No, if a CUP, if, what is SCP? If it's conditional use permits required for a single use, single-family dwelling.
Yes.
It would also be required.
Nope, not, no.
No, we can't, we can't.
How do we reflect that clearly as an allowed use?
No.
Then we would put as a permanent use.
And, and, and that is the point I was making earlier.
Something that people want to build is supportive housing, that's the first thing they want to build on, let, let's use TP, since we're talking about that. Then, yes, if we were requiring for any residence, an AUP or CUP, then we would require it for that also, but we couldn't analyze it as though it was anything different than a single-family residence, is that correct?
Right, so, but we would, we wouldn't add a square then, under TP? For now residential CUP?
What would you put, if you had P, it's only.
You would put what we have here, you would either put a P, or you would put what we have drafted here.
Yeah, which I, I think just needs to be clarified, that it exists, well, to me, it isn't as clear.
We should just put this as the all-encompassing piece of information, what you guys have. Take the Ps out, it makes it clear that, that you can't treat any of those things any differently than you're treating them up above. So whatever we say up above is fine, but we would also need to clarify that if you were converting an existing single-family home, or duplex, or whatever they had, employee housing, there could not be an additional level of scrutiny for it as a result of that conversion. Correct? So if it, whether it had an AUP or CUP initially, once that house was initially approved, there's no secondary.
Right.
Analysis, and so.
Absolutely, for that type of use, right.
So if there is no analysis of impacts associated with supportive housing, traditional housing, and so on, and so on, then you have to ask yourself, what is the purpose of requiring a use permit
in the first?
For a single-family residence in the first place?
Exactly, because, because doing that doesn't really, we don't gain anything.
New thing and not.
We do gain, I, I would disagree that we don't gain anything. Timber, the timber preserve zone is designed for managing timber.
Right.
And the housing component of it should be minimized. Originally, under the TPZ zone, all there was allowed were caretaker facilities. This new state law just blew the lid off of that and, and allows all these other potential uses. So, and the problem with, with residential uses in the, you know, wildland urban interface is, you know, we don't have to go into great detail on that, but there's, it makes it difficult to, to manage the land for production, manage the fires and fuels, and it creates a difficulty with getting people in and out during a, during a fire.
We've got. Yeah, get all that.
These are all things, these are all things that we would, we would want.
Change the density, it still only allows one dwelling unit.
But, right, but the problem is it's where? If you look at the TPZ, there's some areas in the TPZ that are close to Highway Four, and you go, you know what? A, 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 a house a mile from Highway Four that can get in and out is fine. There's other parts of TPZ, they're literally in the middle of nowhere. And a house out there is a disaster for a number of reasons. One, it creates an ignition point that's really hard to get to. Second, it makes it difficult for people to get in and out. Get the people out of the house and the emergency crews in to fight the fire.
We, we understand this, we understand this.
So I'm saying that it matters, it makes sense to condition a single-family dwelling with a use permit in the TPZ, even if it. even if it didn't have the residential care support.
I agree, you see. I agree. I think we're, we're, we're in full understanding of that.
And I have one other question. On this chart, I see an underlined red item across from each of the, each of the residential, supportive, transitional. What are those?
We apparently had.
It's an addition.
It's a what?
It's been added.
Those little, what are they?
What do you mean, what are they?
100% affordable developments.
No, there's a little, on my, on, on the chart, under AP, below family daycare, I said residential care.
Those are crossed out Ps.
Crossed out Ps.
Oh, they're the crossed out. Okay.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell what those were. Thank you.
So, what are we, are we doing a conditional use permit for a house in TP now? Is that what you guys decided?
I think that's the only question here for us, is, is there, are, do we want to require some kind of use permit in any of these zones? That, that's the one and only question, and would we be?
And I think the only question is specific to TP.
Well, it could be for, for.
Any of them, right.
Yeah, it could be for general forest. I mean, it could be for any of them. I don't think we're likely to choose to do that in the others. But.
No.
I think if we're doing this, we should be making a decision on each one of them.
And, and anytime, that decision has to be made on the basis of this is a single-family dwelling. But I think, and I think it makes sense to, to require an AUP on timber preserves for single-unit dwellings. For all the reasons that Tom and Fasino has stated.
Well, I agree with that. I cannot imagine a scenario in which we are going to tell somebody they can't have their cabin out in the middle of nowhere.
Right.
Off-grid, when we can only analyze it as a single-family dwell.
Right.
Even, even though that we might have concerns, people get to choose that they are going to take those risks.
Yeah.
I think in the, if we look on the general plan, I think there are requirements that there be, you know, two exits and, you know.
Not for a single-family dwelling.
Not for a single-family dwelling, sure.
No, not on a large piece of property.
You're talking about discretionary applications?
I thought there were fire safe requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they are, so you'll have to have a driveway that racks those.
Right, right. But you're not, but you're not, we're not talking about secondary access.
Boundaries, you know, but, yeah, so you're.
If we were talking about general forest, you know, we're not going to talk about general, if, you know, I'd agree with Michelle, right? In general forest, we're not going to have those kind of restrictions. But this is a timber preserve zone. This is 77,000 acres specifically set aside for timber production, timber management, secondarily set aside for watershed and wildlife. What we're trying to encourage people to do is not buy properties out there for residential use. If you want to live in the forest, live in the general forest. But, and our concern, my concern here originally, and then my group's concern here originally, was as, if, essentially, as climate change advances, some of the timber lands will be less productive than others. And it would be inappropriate to have those lands sold for residential purposes and then compromise their ability, or ability to protect the rest of the lands from fire and, and such. And so that's, that's a.
We're talking about 150-plus acre parcels where you're only permitted one residence.
Exactly. You're only permitted one residence and an ADU and accessory structures per week.
Per parcel.
But you said, that later on in the code, it says that, that, that the higher 60-acre parcels could be reduced with, with permission. So you could, you could, you could.
Not as long as they're in the TPZ. So the TPZ requires a minimum parcel size, period. So if you, if you want to reduce the parcel size from the, from the, the minimum in the TPZ, then they're going to have to rezone that parcel.
Right. And then that would be all the question.
That's a mess in itself to rezone out of the TPZ.
Right. But, but this, but this would, and that's my point, and that's okay. What's, what's not, what's challenging, and it should be challenging to, to rezone.
Right, right.
But we don't want it to be converted to residential uses simply because SPI decided, hey, you know what, we, we don't, it's, it's not enough value on that land anymore. We're going to sell it, you know, for residential use. We don't want the TPZ that's less, we don't want the TPZ anymore dotted with residential uses that could compromise the management of the area. But if you guys want to do it, I mean, I, I guess my confusion here is that my understanding, the focus of the general plan was to, to promote residential uses in, in, in existing communities and to conserve resources outside existing communities. To reduce, you recognize that the wildland urban interface was not a great thing, and you didn't want to make it any worse. So the timber preserve zone is the, is the least necessary for residential use. And I, the, a very wise land use lawyer once told me, it's great to make it easy to develop in community centers. And that's, and yet you guys have done a great job making it easier to develop in community centers. But unless you also make it more difficult to develop outside community centers, you're going to get that development where you don't want it. So that's our concern here.
I guess I'm sorry. So I'm going to make the opposite argument, which is there's always unintended consequences to a choice. I think that while I might personally feel like I'd like to keep those timber preserves pristine and available for timber production, it's possible that you would have somebody who has 1,000 acres and they have one house on it, and they want to put it in a, in a timber preserve themselves. Then they have a house on it. So we're not going to, I think the only way to do what you're saying, Tom, is to not allow any structures in a timber preserve. But if I'm SPI, I might want a caretaker's place out there in the middle of my 5,000 acres.
But we have to remember that not all TPZ land is under the ownership of SPI. There's, there's plenty of land that's under private ownership of.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Let's say somebody wants to do that. We don't want to deter them from doing that by saying, well, you can't have a house there. And because the state has made this determination about residential care facilities and supportive housing and transitional housing, we can't restrict that, even though common sense tells us we might want to in these areas. I think we're cutting off our nose to spite our face to then start saying, well, we're not going to allow a residence in any of these zones because.
A conditional use permit is not a denial. Conditional use permit is a conditional use permit. It's not a denial. You guys would be able to use your discretion to issue the, consider, consider conditional use permit or not issue the conditional use permit. But if it's a permitted use, there is no discretion, and it happens wherever, where anybody wants it to happen. At that point, you gotta wonder, how are we actually conserving resources in the timber preserve?
I just realistically don't think we're going to tell somebody on 160-plus acre parcel that we want to tell them exactly where they're going to put their one and only residence. And I don't think that you could characterize that as converting that to residential development. That, it, we might think it's preferable to not have residential development there, but I'm not sure that I would be comfortable telling somebody they can't.
So are you saying we should not make it subject to AUP in the timber?
I, I don't see what the value is because I don't think that in reality, the planning director is going to tell somebody that they can't do it.
And in reality, so we do that, wait, but in reality, is there, do we really expect the one.
Yeah.
Thing out there in the middle of the forest to become a small residential care facility or supportive housing or transitional housing? It's probably not going to happen. But for all the, all the reasons that you state, Tom.
Right.
I, I think maybe we're, we really have to take a realistic look at this and say, we certainly hope it never happens. They would have a why to make it so. But I would certainly, I was about to say, I certainly wouldn't send my grandmother out there while. That's wrong passion.
It would be a lot of work to send her out there. Mine too.
Some shovels would be required. Well, well, and anyhow.
Well, just, so, well, well, before.
Just a guess.
Uh, Commissioner, hold on, hold on, please. Before we go ahead, let us look at what are those findings of a conditional use permit that would prevent, that would prevent, what are this, what are those specific findings of a CUP that would make some of the concerns that we have go away? When I look at those, when I look at those findings, there's nothing in those findings really that would say, we've looked at all these things and therefore we're going to deny your CUP.
Well, and the sequel for what?
It'd be tough.
And conditions that the local fire agency might impose.
Okay.
Not, not for a single-family.
Not for a single-family, that's the thing. It's.
Okay.
It almost, you would keep.
Not a single-family use.
Back around and it doesn't seem, it seems pointless. It seems pointless. I mean, it's either.
Again, yeah, by, by imposing a discretionary process, it doesn't really address the issue. So, because I cannot make up findings for a CUP because I have a bias about whether or not it's going to become a, a residential care facility in the future.
It's just merely a.
The findings are specific. Unless those findings change, it's, 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 it's an exercise in futility.
So could you point me to the findings you're speaking of? Where, what page are we on?
I'm just looking at findings for a CUP generally, if Gina can find it. I'm looking at, I looked at them from a different staff report. So.
Administration.
Oh, Gina, I can find them in this document. Please do so.
They have to say something about safety. We're talking about safety conditions. Okay.
Conditional use permit required findings, page 192.
So, see you. Yeah, she said 192. Almost there. Okay, the proposed use is allowed within the applicable zoning. It's consistent with the general plan. Public health, safety and general welfare. Proposed complies with the design of development, et cetera, et cetera. So public safety, health and welfare.
Yeah, in my argument, yes. Item C, the, the, you could, the proposed use.
What, what would be the, what would be the safety, what would be the safety? If, if, if conditions of approval are provided to mitigate those safety concerns, what then would be the safety issue?
You'd have, but you'd have to put conditions.
Right.
For health, safety and general welfare of the community and to avoid detrimental, to avoid being detrimental to surrounding properties and improvements. You have to put conditions on the use to do that. And the only way you could be, put those conditions is if you had a use permit requirement, which we're not going to have.
So what conditions would be any different than would be required of a house being built in a WU zone? And you can only look at it as a single-family residence?
Well.
So I don't know what additional conditions you're going to impose.
Now.
I kind of listed a bunch of them. I could list more.
Yeah. Did I, did I understand, Gina, for you to say that, that we can't, the, the local fire agency can't impose conditions when we're dealing with a single-family residence?
The, they can't do discretionary conditions, but each fire district, so building permits are routed to the fire district. And they have their own sets of what they.
Yeah, because we're not.
That they will impose on the building permit.
But they're going to happen anyway.
Right.
Whether it's a conditional use permit.
The standard for a standalone, single-family residence is different than, say, a residential subdivision.
So, so what you're saying is that, that they, they can impose the standards on the building permit?
Not site-specific. They can't craft conditions in a discretionary way. They have a set of conditions for single-family occupancy. We require this, this and this. That's already preset. And they go down the checklist and say what's needed based on the occupancy being proposed.
Because we're dealing with the public health of, we're, we're dealing with the public health of the, of the firefighters here. You know, so that, you know, fire chiefs will not send their people into.
Right.
Areas.
So it sounds like the question is, if we were to require a conditional use permit for a single-family residence in the TP zone, would we have the ability to condition the permit beyond the normal fire safe requirements set forth for a residence?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's exactly why you'd want to.
Right. What, what we're saying is, there seems to be a question as to whether or not we legally have the ability to do that. What those conditions would look like, right?
You can do, in a, it's a policy choice whether to require a use permit for a single-family.
Right, but what kind of conditions can you apply to a single-family residence beyond what current code already requires?
So I, I mean, I guess theoretically, you could say, this has an extremely high fire danger. We're going to require additional water storage on site. I mean, there's, there's things that we could do that go beyond the building code on a site-specific basis.
Okay.
It could be an AUP or CUP, but I mean, that is completely a policy call.
Right.
So, and again, clearance of a road to get to the residential.
I'm still going to research the extent to which sequo analysis might be limited for these other types of housing.
Right.
In the circumstance. And I'm hearing that, that Martha believes we won't be able to even look at it. And I'll just double-check that, but, but yes, I mean.
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to hinge on the degree to which the additional use is reasonably foreseeable. And then you go, oh, well, great. What does that mean?
But I don't know, Tom, I don't know what, off the top of my head, if they actually in the statute mention sequo.
Gotcha.
In that way. I mean, that would be, you're assuming sequo applies in a normal way in that situation.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, it, it seems pretty clear that you have to treat it like a single-family residence.
Yeah.
Right.
Period. So, so yes, so you could say, instead of a 14-foot wide clear driveway with every 300-foot pullouts, you could add something more to that. I don't know what adding something more to that would really achieve. That, that's what I'm saying. And yes, you could require them to use even more fire-resistant materials so they could theoretically shelter in place. You could have bigger clearances to be maintained around it. But I don't know that you're really achieving a significant difference.
Right.
That, that's funny.
So it looks to me, it looks to me like I'm not going to get the support of the commission so we can conclude this discussion, I think.
Well, I mean, I think it's a good discussion. I mean.
We'll remember this discussion and we probably won't have to have it again, whatever we end up with.
So are we heading to?
Well, I'll tell you when you'll have it again. You're going to have it again when there's, somebody puts these, these homes out there and they burn down. And someone's going to wonder, who allowed that to happen? You know, why weren't they better protected? You know, what, what possessed us to do that? And, but you'll, none of you will be around when that happens. I've, I've had, I've been in those situations. I brought this up in Amador, I brought it up in Calaveras, and the fires came through, and guess what? People asked all the same questions. And all we could tell them was, well, you know, that's what they allowed, and that's what happened.
I think your answer is that people have some amount of freedom of choice in their lives. And if they choose to take that risk, I'm not sure it's my decision to tell them not to.
Yeah, but see, it's, it's more than that, though, because when we put a house out there, that means the fire crew that goes out there is first defending that property and second, dealing with the putting out the fire or averting the fire or managing the fire. And second, dealing with the putting out the fire or averting the fire or managing the fire.
Fire departments have discretion. They come to, they, uh, they, they come to a driveway, they look down the driveway. And if the house is not possible or not safe to defend for the firefighters, they do not have an obligation to go down that driveway.
But their first priority is lives, structures and everything else. That's the priority, lives, structures and everything else. And the more you put structures out there, the more you put the structures out there.
Tom, we're not arguing that, we're not arguing that at all. We're arguing about our own restrictions as to what we can do. Uh, and my tendency is to require an AUP and see what happens. But, you know, for a single unit dwelling detached, uh, in the timber zones, uh.
So I guess my question is, before we put Julie to the work that Julie's going to go to, should we just vote on it now and say, well, if there's not three votes for it, forget about it? Um, because I don't want to put Julie to a bunch of work, just for three people.
It's my work publicly for one, I have the CQ research, just so you know. But I'm, but I, I mean, that.
Are you going to do the work anyway?
My work would be whether or not, the extent to, I would be, I, I think the question that Gina raised about the extent to which CQ would require us to look at the potential for the other types of housing would impact, like are we allowed to, to do that reasonably foreseeable analysis? Or does state law somewhere foreclose that when it comes also to CQ, not just to allow?
Exactly.
And that, so that's something I'll do and advise the county privately about so that it can privately influence their decision making.
Okay.
But separately from that, I think there, the question you, that you're raising is whether residences in general should have, um, some sort of use permit requirement in the TP zone, and I believe that that's not a legal determination. I believe that is a policy determination.
Right.
And the policy is being informed to a certain extent by what is already required under the fire safe rules for a building permit. And I think the question being asked by the commission or being explored is whether it would add anything useful beyond those requirements to have case by case analysis of whether a residence is a good idea or whether additional conditions should be required.
That's very well stated, I hope you remember it.
No, I'm just going to listen to the tape.
I really missed the question.
That is exactly how I see it.
Thank you.
And, and so maybe we should leave it at that until we.
Why don't we poll the commission on, um, whether they feel an AUP is something that they could support if, if after further investigation, it seems like there could be some value in it?
All right, that's, that's supposed to answer that there.
I'm just, only, to my knowledge, I'm only analyzing CQ in fact.
Right, exactly.
Or, or how CQ would be done if we did a discretionary review. But then all the, whether to do an AUP, there's other policy considerations that I have no say in.
No, but, but, but understanding.
But the question is, question of whether we can impose conditions.
And whether we can consider the reasonably for, and here's a whole other. Do I think that it's reasonably foreseeable that a single family home would be converted to one of these other uses? I don't think it's reasonably foreseeable and I think that's what's going to cut us off.
Well, that reasonably foreseeable, as Mr. Impasino knows, is probably not necessarily intuitive. And there has been a ton of case law saying, and there might be, for example, something that says the fact that it's allowed means it's reasonably foreseeable.
Okay.
So, and we don't know what it means for CQ, okay? I, I, I prefer not to share my CQ analysis with somebody who's currently suing us.
No, I, I understand, but I'm, I'm saying that's, so, so first, how do the commissioners feel? Do you feel that, like an AUP is something that we should consider imposing on a single family residence in the TP zone?
I don't think so. I don't think so, I think, uh, just, you know, less restriction on a single family dwelling is probably where I'm leaning.
I'm really torn on this and I'm, I'm really into people's liberties, okay? But when your decisions affect so many other people, that's where I look at it. And I go, you know, this really does, it's kind of an interesting topic. It definitely need discussion. Because if somebody decides to build in that area and are careless, we're all affected by it. So I see both sides of this. But having the right to do what you want to do on your own property is another thing that I'm really strong, I have strong feelings about too. So I'm, I'm really torn on this.
Well, I think it makes, um, makes a difference what we could do with an AUP or a CUP. So if that's, if that's what your research would show.
The research, you are ready, if you have an AUP and a CUP, you would be able to impose whatever conditions you thought necessary to meet the findings. But you would be doing, you would be designing those conditions, for the default right now is you would be designing those conditions without thinking about.
Right.
Residential care supportive housing or transitional housing, you'd be thinking about a house. I, because CQ applies to discretionary permits, I need to double check whether, how Martha says this law applies carries over into CQ so that the CQ analysis also would pretend that we're only considering.
Right.
A, a residence and nothing bigger. But in terms, yeah, go ahead.
Just, and Julie is welcome to do her, her legal research and that. But what the state is really saying, so like transitional housing or supportive housing can be thought of as, that's really no different than someone having their friends live there. It just happens their friends are, you know, recovering alcoholics. It's like you can't, when you look at a house, you don't look at, well, does this family have their grandma living here? And is she have a walker? And so do we need to do additional conditions because she cannot drive if she needs to evacuate? So it's like you can't put these, you can't analyze CQ based on the family makeup. And that's what they're saying.
Yeah, I totally agree. I guess off the top of my head, maybe Martha, you can help me out here. Does small residential care facility supportive housing or transitional housing, do any of those expand on the definition of what can be built as quote unquote a single family residence? So does, or is the structural limitations the same? And literally the definition of these three things is only related to who's living there?
So there may be something with the licensing or the facility you're providing that maybe you need to provide a room or separate sleeping rooms or, you know, I don't know about all of those types of things, but it's saying the planning department can't think about that.
Right, I totally, I totally understand and agree and know that there's constitutional law about not considering family makeup. I guess the question is whether the physical, whether the same laws that provide for these types of housing, what they, to the, what, to what extent do they allow us to for, quote unquote, foresee a more intensive development because of the type of housing it is?
Not more intensive than a large.
As not a lawyer, I think the state is saying you can't foresee, just as you can't perceive that somebody is going to have a lot of children or adopt children.
Right.
And then have a lot of, more adopt children with disabilities. So I think what you, the commissioners need to think about is just really that simple question of, do you want to require a use permit, AUP or CUP, for single family homes in TP? In the TP zone?
Right, and I, I think that, my, my feeling is, is that for now, I would like to say yes, require an AUP. But I'm certainly susceptible to changing that if the word comes back, well, we can't require any additional conditions or.
No, I, I can tell you right now, I'm not going to come back saying you can't. The only thing I'm, would be researching is whether or not under CQ, the definition of reasonably foreseeable, you know, basically we have Mr. Impasino suggesting that if we allow one of these things pursuant to a use permit, what I'm hearing him say is, I might, I, Tom Impasino might argue that you have to look at more under CQ because it's reasonably foreseeable, not just that it'll be a house, but it'll be one of these other types.
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, and I think though, that it doesn't really matter because if you had a family with ten kids there, wouldn't it?
Right, I just don't know enough about the physical development and how that might change.
Well, that's what I'm saying is.
Based on, uh, these, and let's see, and so I'll do that research. I don't think it's going to have a great, I do think that Martha's correct, that basically the question for you is whether you want to have site specific, really what it's about is do you want to look on a site by site basis before giving a thumbs up to a house? That is, that's the policy question before you. Separately from that, I will be looking at what does the fact that these other things are automatically allowed and while we're considering conditions for a house, how does the CQ, does the CQ analysis change at all? Based on the fact that the state is now allowing these things? Martha thinks the answer will be no, and she might be right, I will double check that.
Okay.
May I just, uh, may I make a point? When I was stuck, we were talking CQ earlier and I said, CQ has no place in this discussion because a single family residential structure is categorically exempt from CQ. So there is no need to do any research.
That is possibly a truth, that, that.
It's not possibly, it's, 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 it's in the book.
Yeah.
I had to go get the book because I don't want any argument about, he said something, section one five three zero three. A, in any jurisdiction that I've ever worked in, a single family residential use has been categorically exempt from CQ. So when I'm sitting here, I'm listening, you're going to go and do some research about a single family use.
Thank you.
No, we, we actually got, yeah, a little ahead of ourselves and didn't even consider the, whether or not it was applicable. CQ, then you're back to the policy question.
Right.
Then you might not have to worry about CQ if it turns.
It's not a policy question, it's about what, first, it's what can we do?
Exactly.
It's what can we do? If we can't, if we can't impose any conditions on a single family dwelling.
What's the point of, I'm asking you by discretion?
Well, not, aside from CQ.
So if you have a, okay, application, okay, let's forget, let's, let's assume that the project will be exempt from CQ, categorically exempt, which was, thank you Gabriel, that was very useful. But if, so if somebody comes in to their hundred and forty TPZ acres and wants to put in a home, you would not be able to add, you would only be thinking in your head regardless of the fact that there is a potential.
Residence, residence.
All you can think about is, is a house.
Yeah.
And to what extent do you want to have flexibility to talk about putting a house in this location is a special risk? And this is some additional things beyond what's already required in a building permit that I want to impose on a house? That's, that is.
Yes.
I don't see any room for legal research outside of, with the CQ situation being, I don't see the.
Well, the, the, the legal research is what is the limit of our discretion on, on imposing conditions?
The same way it would be for any other use permit except in your head, you won't be thinking of, you'll be pretending that.
No, I know, I know, no, no. I'm, look, I'm, I'm a volunteer firefighter. Um, I drive a water tender truck. And, uh, and I know firefighters are very dedicated to what they're doing. They would not easily say, well, this is, I'm going to probably die if I drive down that driveway, so I'm not going to do it. The chief might command them not to, but if there are people in there dying, they're going to.
So if you.
So if we can, if we can impose limitations on where a single family house can be within a general, uh, within a, a TP zone, um, then I think it's a good thing to do.
You could.
And, and if we can, but then I'd say we ought to have this subject to an AUP.
And I, no, no, I think you can do that without being subject to an AUP. You can do that by having development standards that limit where you can actually have a single family structure in a TPZ zone. You can accomplish that without going through the, the AUP process easily.
We could create conditions for a single family home in a TP zone.
I like that, but until we do that.
Preset so people know what they are.
Yeah.
So that, that, you know, the distance from a public road is less than whatever. You could do whatever, I just don't know what realistically, how much I want to try to control what somebody else chooses to do on their very large piece of property. And I do understand and I would probably, I, I might advise somebody differently than what I'm talking about here today. I just am very uncomfortable with trying, we're talking a very small amount of development on a very large piece of property, most likely.
But we're talking about.
How comfortable am I in telling them exactly what they can do?
Well, we're talking.
Excuse me, I, I reject. Also, I reject something.
That is true in every piece of property in Arnold or in Calaveras County that wildfire could rip through.
Right.
And it doesn't matter if you're in the middle of town, we saw it over, you know?
Yeah, for me, it's real simple. For me, I don't want to restrict anybody from building in the TP zone. All I want is them to have more clearance and a wider road.
Yeah.
That's it, I don't care where you put it on your property. I only care that you have good ingress and egress, that people can get in and take care of the problem if it arises. And that they have plenty of distance between trees in their houses or where they're going to be doing a burn of some kind, they need plenty of distance, that's it in my mind.
Above and beyond what is already required when you build in a wildfire urban interface.
And because I'm not well versed on what that is, I don't know exactly what it is, but I would want to review that. I haven't come across this in my past.
Yeah, so.
I would like to review it before I make a decision on what I'd want to do. But that is the only thing that I'm concerned about, not, I don't want to restrict people from building in the TP zone, just having clearance around for fire, that's it, for me.
So I think a question would be maybe if we were to bring in the firefighter, somebody who could tell us what is a, what is a reasonable road width to require? Is it, and then compare what that ideal situation is versus what is already required. So would you want them to have additional firefighting water available? Perhaps, because they are probably not going to be on city water, there won't be a fire hydrant there. So you could limit some of those things.
But there could be some additional things that would mitigate the concerns.
So could we set those in advance, tell people what they are? Just say these are the conditions for building in this zone, period, not have an AUP under those conditions. Can you do that, Julie? Could it be just written into the?
There's nothing that would prevent you from just adding throughout the entire TPZ zone. The only reason to add a use permit is if you felt that a site specific look needed to be taken. The individual parcels in TPZ are so different from each other that one size won't fit all. That would be the reason to add, to add, you know, to do a use permit versus standards. But it's a totally, I think this is really a policy call.
Yeah.
When would we get around to that?
Well, I think.
I mean, I think it's.
We're a week away from our next meeting, I can bring you what the, the driveway requirements are. I mean, we, we all know, we get all the.
And if they need to be expanded in that area, it's something we can decide at that time and make rational decision.
And when we're considering that, if, if we do bring in a local expert, I would suggest the chief of the Ebbets Pass.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, because that's where most of this is.
Yeah, well, maybe they can come at the next meeting next Thursday.
Good luck.
No?
We can't even get fire districts to respond to our application round. I mean, that's the reality.
Tim, maybe you can come.
I don't know.
I know, I, I know, I'm.
Doug, Doug Oliver works.
It's people that are going into danger, so maybe he should show up.
He shows up at a lot of community things and he's very good about it, so.
Doug Oliver works with the fire chiefs, he can get them here if you want them. Doug Oliver works with the fire chiefs, he can get them here if you want them.
So, so this is saying, so it seems like the general consensus is we don't want any kind of use permit, but we may be interested in increased safety measures just being built into the code. And otherwise, we just leave everything as is.
Yeah, with that, the one suggestion I would have is under additional regulations, we should have reference to the state law, um, as far as small residential care facility, supportive housing, transitional housing. So people can look that up, uh, either the definition provision or just, or the title or whatever. Um, I think that.
I mean, Commissioner Lardish, I can tell you regarding that is we cannot make building those types of facilities any more difficult under state law than.
I'm, I'm not saying.
I, I, we're on the same page.
Somebody looks at this and they say, small residential care facility, what the heck is that?
Yeah, we, we are very limited as to what we can and can't do with those types of facilities. We, we just have to approve them.
But people need to know what they are.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And on the same, on the same point, family daycare, um, I think needs to be defined in our, in our zoning code. I mean, are we?
It is.
Are we, it is?
Yeah, I thought we saw, we had some stuff in here.
It's all in the, uh.
Family.
It's in the use classifications.
I'm sorry, what, where?
It's in the use classifications.
What, what page are you on?
Use classifications, uh, beginning on page two-thirty. Uh, residential is two-thirty.
Thank you.
Ah, okay. Okay, then.
There we go.
Okay, so.
Family daycare.
Yeah, okay, so it is only for under eighteen. So that was, that was one thing I was concerned about. Um, later on, I mean, we're saying permitted all the way across. Uh, we need to have provisions for, you know, respite care for Alzheimer's patients and this sort of thing.
Eight or fewer children for small family.
Okay, yeah.
Supportive housing is. Doesn't say.
Then may I suggest that we put in where we, uh, over an additional regulations to see section seventeen-point-four-two, mile one oh.
I'm sorry, what do you want, Tim?
On family daycare? Since I didn't know where it was, um, somebody else might have a hard time too. I was looking at our definitions, so.
Well, all the use classifications, everything under the use classifications is referenced under that section. So I don't think we need to go in and, and.
If somebody doesn't know what family daycare is.
They're going to look under the use classifications.
How would they know to look under use classifications?
Because we say that right before the use table in each one.
Uh-huh. Ah. Okay.
So the small residential care facility and the family daycare both have limitations on the number of people involved there. But supportive housing and transitional housing, I don't see any limitation on the number of people. So you're saying treat it like a, a single-family residence?
No, the state says treat it like a single-family residence.
But so.
Are we saying it's not very logical?
Between the, the size of it. I, so somebody could.
They, they may have some, you know, like
Under.
In the licensing and in the, you know, depending on what it is and depending on the population they're serving. And there's a whole complex system with that. So, and it, the state is saying we get to deal with that, you do not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, it just seems.
It's crazy, it seems crazy.
In scope, yeah, so.
Right.
But that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Not our. Okay. Back to where we were.
Which isn't very far.
Which is not very far. So we're going to come, take a look at what the potential conditions could be at our next meeting and come back to this and then, but, but at this point.
We'll try to do a little research over the next week. It may not come back that soon. Sometimes it's a little hard to corral people and to get them to understand what we're asking. Um, and as well, um, you know, we're just extremely swamped in our department.
I just don't wanna see us imposing additional conditions and restrictions unless we can have substantive impact on the safety.
Right.
So that's, you know, if we're just doing it to make ourselves feel good that we put something in here, I.
Well, it's silly.
I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Yeah.
We're moving along here?
I, I think we are.
So let's take a look at the time.
Yeah, do we wanna take a lunch break?
Oh, absolutely.
Now, or, now or later is the question. Do, do we finish?
If we think this is a good spot to stop, you know, there may be people that are hungry or could otherwise use, or, or, you know, a restroom break or.
Lines are shorter now than they will be in twenty minutes.
Yeah. The taco truck is calling, Tim.
It is calling. We're all gonna run to the safety.
So, um.
Oh, need more than that.
How, okay, how?
I think we've done fifty minutes before, and that's what.
Well, right, I'm just gonna wear that with me, so at twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty. Be back at twelve-thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. I did a lot of discussion.
We are adjourned for lunch.
And so we're gonna, we've sort of more of the same here. And then we're gonna touch on some of the animal care stuff. So I'm going to assume that as soon as Tim gets on page eighteen, he's gonna have some comments.
Well, this, this is where we first get into the animal, animal stuff. So maybe we should have a general, I don't, I don't know if the other commissioners have had a chance to look at what I've been doing.
I think maybe we should just hold this aside and come back to it after everybody's had a chance to look at that, and then we'll skip onto the next section.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good idea, because Martha and I really haven't had any time to, um, you know.
I agree.
Absorb it all and compare it to what we've got currently drafted and, and in its relation to Title Six and.
Anytime we get to any animal.
Yeah.
Subject, let's hold it off.
Give us a little bit more time to kinda digest it all and come back.
You might like it.
I might, I'm not saying I don't.
The only thing I wanna add is that I have been here for a long time, and there's been discussion about we need to change Title Six for at least ten years.
Right.
So you might wanna, could not expect that that will be done necessarily as quickly as you're hoping.
I'm there with my dark sky ordinance.
Well.
Well, and also the zoning.
We can strongly encourage Lisa Medina to initiate that.
My feeling is that we go ahead with a, with a law the way it is and then make changes if we, if Title Six ever does get completely done, but let's.
Okay, so.
Put off animal stuff.
Page nineteen.
Oh, let's see, where, where's the definition for bed and breakfast inns?
It's in here, I, I thought somewhere, or some kind of reference to it.
I was looking for all these things in definitions, and so I was, uh.
Well, yeah, we should, um.
I know behind. So. It's not in residential uses.
No, I think it's would be in lodging.
Commercial, commercial under lodging. I should have tapped my pages.
Page two-thirty-seven.
Thank you.
Okay. Then it seems to me we need to have a separate then provision for face, the basic vacation rental by owner usage.
There's no zoning stuff for it.
Mm-mm, what?
It's just a single-family residence.
Okay, um, you don't consider that a, a use? I mean, it's a short.
A short-term vacation rental?
Short-term vacation rental.
We are tackling that separately.
Yes, and ordinance really is coming up.
Yeah.
Really is.
Yeah.
Ah, 'cause, you know, later we, it's not on this one, I think, um. The motels and hotels come in and, and we need to distinguish between the, the individual rentals and, uh, and hotels and motels. But, okay, I mean, are, there aren't many bed and breakfast inns now. Are they, that they actually supply a meal?
There are.
It's optional, but, yeah, they're around.
Uh-huh, okay.
The three, the notes at the end.
Footnotes.
Did, did you not read Tim's explanation? It's okay, yes. It's at the end of the section.
Permitted as accessory to a farm is defined in section blah, 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 Food and Agriculture Code.
Two.
Okay, so with lodging, I mean, the, the short-term rental of a, of a house is lodging. I mean, I would think.
It does, there's no planning repercussions for it right now. It's, it's just a single-family home.
Right, so.
So.
We will be, we are going to tackle the whole uh, short-term vacation rental.
And whether they'll be permitted or.
Right, so, under a separate ordinance, if there is something else that subsequently needs to be rolled in and amended in our, in this code, then we will certainly do so.
Okay, right. So is that something that we're planning on disallowing or?
No, it's, it's, the short-term vacation rental is something that, uh, is being prepared right now by the county council's office. And, um, it has gone through a kind of a review by, by different people. So that's coming up pretty, uh, it's gonna be coming up pretty quickly.
It's regulating it, it's not banned.
It's, it's not, yeah.
But the, so, the fact that we don't have it listed here doesn't mean you can't do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it doesn't mean you can't do it.
Well, no, I think he's asking because if you don't, if any use that's not. Right now, there's no regulation.
Right.
So the, right now, there, it, it, except Lake Toluq, there is no separate regulation. But I think people are doing, the argument that you would make is it's a part of a residential use. It's not a, a new land, I mean, that's where it gets fuzzy.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and so is being able to lease out your home part and parcel of a regular residential use, that's the issue. We are going to add regulations to get rid of that, to have actual standards that will, I think, apply differently. I'm not the one writing it, but different, um, standards in different zones, right?
Okay.
I haven't seen it.
Sarah's writing that down.
Yeah, Sarah's writing it down, but I have seen.
People based on the number of bedrooms and things like that.
I have seen, I mean, the, the only ma- major difference between the STVR currently in Lake Toluq and what is gonna apply countywide is that we took away the AUP requirement, and it's not making it discretionary, it's not making it ministerial. Plus, there are standards that will be added on for, you know, how, how you do it.
So Julie, is that an, is that an urgency ordinance, or is that meant to be a permanent ordinance?
I'm not aware of anything where that would be an urgent.
I was just thinking of the, like, the historic preservation matter.
There was an urgency, and so that's why that came forward that way. This one doesn't meet the same criteria, and I don't think that the plan.
It is not.
Okay.
Hey.
Um, yeah, I, so I was delinquent in not realizing all these uh, definitions that appeared outside the definitions section.
That are actually standards, not definitions.
Standards, okay. Um, but I take it outdoor entertainment includes concerts, is that? Great, I'm done with.
Hey. Anybody have anything on twenty?
Well, I think it's, it's misleading to call these rural home industries, and they don't need to be in the same building, and they can be really quite substantial, as far as I can tell.
But that's what we call them already.
Right.
Yes.
Well, so.
And, but they do have limitations, though.
Well, and they are required to have a use permit.
There's certain things you can't do under the rural home industries guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we kept it because.
Because we, we found that there is a need um, and a, and a desire by, by members of our county.
Industries on a residential parcel. I just had a problem with residential home industries. Sounds like people knitting things for sale, et cetera. I mean, you can be cranking out, um. Okay, if nobody else is concerned about that, that's fine.
Mittens.
Public comment, public comment?
Sure, should not be.
Um, this is our, on a related matter on the previous page. We talked about home occupations, and the, the question that's come up is, um, we, uh, the California Planning Coalition was, we understand home occupation in the traditional sense where you have an occupation, you know, maybe in one room of your house, and, you know, clients come to visit, and, you know, so you need a certain number of parking spaces, and you only want such and such, you know, certain kind of sign out front. That all makes sense. The question that came up is, um, currently, a lot of people have essentially phone-based businesses, that, that, they don't really use their home per se for it, but they are either a, you know, an independent contractor that, you know, provides Uber services, or they're a content creator that, you know, does influencing or, you know, the, so is that considered a home occupation, or is that excluded from this?
No, it's included.
So, so virtual, so even if I'm not, if I have no sign outside, I have nobody visiting, no clients visiting, that's a home occupation?
Yes.
Okay, so when we get to seventeen-twenty-five-one-forty, let's discuss some of those limitations then. And, 'cause, you know, it, I think, I think some people would be surprised by that if it wasn't called out directly. And if you can't have more than one of those home occupations, some people, when their children are gonna have to sit down and have some serious conversations about, um, uh, you know, which one's gonna go, so, anyway.
Yeah, well, uh, Tom, I'm not sure, uh, let me just put it to you this way. The, the, the home occupation guidelines is designed to protect a residential zone, a residential structure from turning commercial, and therefore, we have guidelines that would regulate uh, how many people come to the home, how many cars, and things of that nature. If somebody's a content creator and they don't have any visits, and they just work on their computer all day, that would be definitely a home occupation. But if. definitely a home occupation, but if your question is, can I not have more than one home occupation per day? I don't know whether or not the existing regulations prohibit more, more than one home occupation, but as long as the home occupation itself doesn't generate any negative impacts on the, on the residence itself, I don't see any reason why you can't have more than one in a, in a single-family home, unless you have one, that you're a content creator, and then the other one, you're an accountant, and you have six visits per day, or things of that nature, so that, that's where I think we need to draw the line.
But. Thank you.
And how many cars, how many equipment is scattered around, you know, anyway, okay. I have nothing on these couple pages, except.
I think we might hold off on deciding about telecommunications until we.
Yeah.
Review that area.
Exactly.
So, we're, we're just progressing great, we're just putting things on.
Nothing significant here either.
So, animal production includes dairy, alright.
Yeah.
What page are we on?
Twenty-two, twenty-three?
Oh, I was, twenty.
Oh, you're still looking to see if you can find anything?
Yes, right.
We should talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, twenty-two, on footnote three, it seems, the, right after the, the cross-out part in red, the word "and" I think should be deleted, because it's permitted as accessory to a farm as defined in such and such.
Yeah.
"And," where, I read that as "and also permitted," and I, I think you meant to just have a condition there. On a farm where no more than three percent.
That's how I read it also.
Okay.
I have nothing in, in the remaining stuff, because it seems like it's all brought over.
Yeah.
Okay, residential zones.
So we've got the same, same things on small residential care facilities, supportive housing, transitional housing.
Think that's all I come back to. Just make sure that's the way we want it presented.
Um, I just, you know, I, I, this is probably a question from Martha, and maybe she's not aware of this, but if you look at our zoning code, and you look at high-density residential, R three tells you so many number of dwelling units per acre, then there is another layer to that information, which is in the general plan, so what you might have in a zoning code that allows maximum of twelve units to the acre, in the general plan, it might say twelve to twenty, so my point is, is there some kind of clarification we can give, especially to new planners that are coming on board, when giving out information about what is allowed, what can I build on, 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 on a, on an R three or R two zone property, to also make sure that there is a corresponding general plan table that has to be looked at? Is that, or is that already worked in somewhere?
It's consistent with the general plan, so, um, R three relative to residential high density, land use designation. Is a, is a minimum of twelve units per acre with a maximum of twenty.
Okay, in, in the zoning code or in the general plan?
Both. So if we go all the way to the end of the table, under standards, you'll see density, minimum parcel size, building height, setbacks, et cetera.
Something thirty-two.
Okay, so do we need to reference that, though, on, in, on the, on, on page twenty-seven to say, see, see whatever it is you just referenced on page thirty-two, just, just, so that when somebody is looking at this, I, I think we can figure it out.
That raises a question, that, as I recall, the online version of the zoning code is gonna have hyperlinks for any phrase that's, that's defined anywhere in the, that's gonna be.
To a reasonable extent.
Right.
Well, well, I mean, if, okay, sure.
Yeah.
But if it's defined, it's gonna have a hyperlink to it, not the idea?
But not necessarily back to, yeah.
What?
So you're saying, back here in the use section, if there's a description of standards, or if there's a definition, but this is just trying to link further back into the table, is what Gabriel's talking about.
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm, I wasn't commenting on Gabriel's.
Right, and, and I think you may have made this point once before, and I think the response we gave was that sometimes those hyperlinks get broken without our knowledge, so even if we have a link to that information, and you try to click that link, it's not gonna get you anywhere, so there's something that I think we need to work with IT on to make sure that when we provide hyperlinks, it actually gets to a specific destination, it gets to where we want it to get to.
But I, I mean, just as an example, on, on page twenty-eight, when we do family daycare, which we've already discussed, you know, to have that be a hyperlink, so you know that that's only for children.
Right.
And then, so, to me, we ought to, if we have family daycare, we also have, ought to have daycare centers, which is for all ages.
Yeah.
Because if we don't list daycare centers, why then?
Yeah, daycare center is a commercial use versus a family daycare is a residential use. So here again, we've defined the different use classifications.
Okay, but I don't see daycare centers listed in a commercial use.
That's because you're in a residential zone. We're not gonna allow a daycare center in a residential zone, it's a commercial use.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay.
Public comment?
Sure.
I think you got a little bit ahead of me here, there were a couple of questions I had about the, the final parts of the resource production, under the development standards, or the supplemental development standards, there's no reference to the street-side setbacks, which are way in another part of the code. Wouldn't it be possible to at least reference that other part of the code somewhere here?
I'm, I'm sorry, Tom, repeat that, what setbacks?
When, when we're talking about development standards in the resource zones.
Yeah.
Right, there's a, it says street-side setback, interior side rear, and then there's a whole section on supplemental standards. There's another section of the code that deals with stream-side setbacks, and, and, and there's nothing here, and I'm not saying you have to repeat it here, but if there was at least a reference somewhere that said.
Then we do have that standard right, that mark rings right here.
Where, where am I looking?
Where it's highlighted on the screen.
Okay.
Under minimum setbacks, it says, see also section seventeen sixteen oh eight oh setbacks, so that has.
Oh, that's the stream-side setbacks, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all included.
Okay, okay, and the other question I had, I thought there was a really good line in here, under the agricultural preserve section, where it says, uh, causes when agricultural preserves or Williams Act contracts may be subject to additional restrictions under the counties Williamson Act program, and the concern, what's happened in other places is, the, people have forgotten that when they're doing their agricultural tourism stuff, and they start doing the, you know, the wedding programs and the rock concerts and the, the, uh, providing, you know, essentially cabins on site, stuff like that, and you end up with situations where people are doing things that are not related to agriculture on their Williamson Act site, and that's, that becomes a problem, and one thing I wish people would do when they get into their Williamson Act process, and they say, you know what? This, I have six parcels here, this is the one parcel of those six that I might wanna do something completely non-agriculturally related to, and it would make everybody's life easier if they just thought about that and left that parcel out of the others, out of the, out of the Williamson Act, 'cause, 'cause it triggers all kinds of complications, so I was wondering if you could just make a reference here to something like, you know, please consider these, these limitations before deciding to put a parcel in the Williamson Act, just a cautionary note, so that we avoid these situations where people could have, if they thought about it when they got into Williamson Act, they'd have left one of their six parcels out so that they could do the, you know, rock concerts, motel, you know, other stuff.
Well, I would hope by signing the contract that they're fully aware of what their limitations are.
I was gonna see.
We haven't seen, but.
I don't, I know.
I'm hoping, I'm trying to encourage people to think about that before they get into that, because, you know, before, you know, I, people who've gotten their Williamson Act contract thirty years ago and have just been redoing it, and get it, and, 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 but now there's sort of a with a, I'm, you're gonna have a, the special events permits system, or the, the new events stuff that's gonna be happening, and that can trigger a lot of, you know, non-agriculture-related stuff.
Yeah, I think we can have those conversations with applicants, aside from, from code, because we are the department that actually processes those applications, and those discussions can be had during the process.
In the instructions for the Williamson Act.
Yeah, I mean, we can roll in, we can roll in notes and warnings and whatever we want into instructions for the application process.
Thank you.
But, yeah, I don't think we necessarily need anything like a warning in code.
Okay, that's fine, just as long as people are warning, 'cause, you know, I wish they'd come to me and say, whoa, you know, what should we think about before we get in our Williamson Act contract, but they don't.
Right.
They come to you, so if, if you could, you know, help people understand.
We have to remember, too, that a lot of those contracts are, you know, they're old and are so getting sold, so, you know, the, the Williamson Act runs with the land, and we don't always have another opportunity to otherwise school people on what they can and cannot do, it's up to the individual to recognize what they're getting themselves into when they're signing that contract.
I think it's probably in the disclosures when they're real estate.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anyway, we're off topic here.
Okay.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Back on twenty-eight.
Yeah. Where am I?
What, why, what's the qualitative difference between family daycare and daycare center? I mean, if you have a, a, a resident, residence that's using, that is a relief from Alzheimer's care sort of situation.
No, 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 no. Family daycare.
I'm, I'm talking about daycare center that is, doesn't have an age limitation, and why couldn't?
Well, it has to do with the state permitting, so, um, one facility is not located within a residence where the other type is.
But why, why is that, why can't, why can't a facility that is caring for adults on a daytime basis be in a residential
If the county wants to allow that, the county can. If the county decides they wanna allow daycare centers in residential zones.
But I, I think we're mixing up the two, yeah, so.
So family daycare you have to allow, right?
Right, so the, the state regulates and defines each one of these and says, you know, where you can. I think your question maybe is whether or not we want to allow daycare centers in a residential zone, and I would suggest not, because that is definitely a commercial use.
Well, I think he's, he's talking about adult daycare, like respite centers, where, so you only have maybe two adults there, somebody drops off their parents there so they can go shopping for four hours, it's just like a child's daycare, but it's for adults that have dementia or, or needs help.
And, and perhaps we could, unless we're.
Wouldn't that be more of a residential care facility than, than what you just described, wouldn't that be a residential care facility?
No, that's in, for somebody who's living in the facility, and this is literally adult daycare.
Okay, okay.
So we could.
So you'd have to create a standards for it, a definition for it, and then have a place for it. I'm sure it's happening now without benefit of a name.
We also might wanna consider that as a standalone ordinance, where we can weigh in more on what the board wants as far as the limitations and bring it back as a.
Right.
But expanding the definition of daycare.
But it requires analysis of what the state law allows, it requires analysis of what's not covered, I think it's a bigger task that might get us off track.
That we're gonna do right now, okay.
It might not even have a license for small scale, and, yeah.
Okay.
But we can put it down as a placeholder, adult daycare question.
Okay, I don't know what that's gonna get us, but.
Well, this isn't the last time we're gonna be looking at the code.
Oh, thanks.
We're hoping to be doing this a lot more regularly.
That's true, we'll have opportunities to correct and update, and I wonder, the other thing to look into about something like that is are there any complaints related to that activity now? Is it something that needs regulation?
Adult daycare.
Not that rowdy.
Well, they, they may not be that rowdy, but I, I think there was one complaint we received, and this has to do with the use of these roads that are held under private ownership, whereby to have a particular type of business, you have to get permission from the, the group that's in charge of your private road where you pay money to, and they felt like we made a wrong determination by allowing a particular use within, you know, within that subdivision, because they, they, they indicated to us that there's more traffic going in and out of that particular residence, so in that particular case, adult daycare is gonna require, you drop somebody off in the morning, you're gonna pick somebody up in the evening, if it's more than a number of trips a typical single-family residential zone would generate, which is ten trips per day, then it might require additional steps for us to look into, it might require them to provide some kind of a traffic study that shows, you know, the impact, so it's not just as easy as checking a box, if it's going to be in a subdivision where the roads are privately held. That too, yeah, that, 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 that could prohibit that use also.
I just think we're probably not even aware of it, 'cause it's more of a informal arrangement right now, under the law, but let's go ahead and look at page twenty-nine. I, I have something circled here. And I don't know why. Why we thought, and. Why we thought and, and A U P would be required for a community garden in rural residential. Do we have to go through that again?
We talked about.
I remember we discussed community gardens, I just didn't remember why rural residential was the point. It's okay, I can probably find it here in my other binder.
You know, just briefly, what was?
I think it may have had to do with the, you know, community gardens usually in a subdivision, people are right next door, they're just walking over. That rural residential, it might turn into something else, but.
I think all my notes are in there.
It's a, it's, I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, just curious. Tim, was there anything that you wanted to talk, anybody else, anything they want to talk about? Nope, let's go on. Nothing here except the animal keeping for me. Anything good there in your notes?
No. No, that we've, we've handled most, I mean, most of this is animal stuff.
Okay.
And we're gonna talk about telecommunications later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So can we move on to commercial zones or do you have anything else?
There's something, on page thirty-two, I think just for the. Person who's not familiar with all these terms, under, in table seventeen point oh five point oh three oh, under maximum density. I think we could just put D U equals dwelling unit. Yeah, cause D U drunk under.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
No, I'm ready for commercial.
Okay, page thirty-five.
I would, since, since on the tables, it's listed eight in this order, H C, C B, C one, C two. I think we just put the professional office in the zone discussion up under historic center.
In the right, the same order.
To change the order by putting.
Yeah, just make it match, the tables.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was me.
Sorry.
Showing my ignorance again, are clinics and skilled nursing facilities, that, are those defined?
They are, I mean, there are different kinds of licenses.
But I, well, I mean.
But are they defined here?
Yeah. Or.
Yes, they're defined.
Sure they are.
Great.
So I was wondering. Are we not intentionally not allowing a hospital in a commercial zone? So it's in, do we want it only in public service zones?
That's the way it appears.
I just wondered if I don't remember any discussion or even noticing that before.
Well, I know one thing we didn't want to do was allow hospitals by right in any zone. I mean, if we're gonna allow hospitals, they have to be, it has to be a discretionary process. And I didn't know it should really matter whether it was in a, you know. As long as it's not in a, you know, in an industrial area where, you know, so. But I'm not aware that we deliberately didn't want to allow them in a particular zone. My concern was that they cannot be allowed by right, they should not be allowed by right.
I mean, a, a new hospital would be a pretty significant project.
Absolutely.
If they had to rezone their property to public service, it probably wouldn't be an issue, and maybe that's the thought here.
I guess what we're asking is, was there a thought to keep hospitals out of commercial?
Honestly, I don't remember.
Martha, help us.
I don't remember, Gina, I think we've had a specific discussion, I was just looking at and. Looks like hospitals are currently allowed, at least in C two, within adminis, with, I don't know what to.
Probably a C U P.
It actually just might be permitted, yeah, there's a permitted, absolutely.
It's permitted, right now it is permitted, but we can make them conditional.
So maybe we should put it back in C two, but with a C U P.
We can do that.
I'd be good with that.
And have dashes for the others.
Yes.
Have dashes for the others. So not permitted in C P or C one.
Right, so C U P in C two only?
That's what I'm thinking.
You know, what, what's really the difference between, except maybe in scale, between a hospital and a skilled nursing facility?
Right, well, way more activity in a hospital.
I mean, you figure people coming in for labs.
Yeah.
Outpatient services, I think there's a lot more activity in a hospital. Emergency.
Clinics we haven't permitted in three of these zones.
We might even consider, consider it in an M four zone if that is the case, as a C U P.
Hospital in an M four zone? In a business park, I guess, I mean.
But the hospital can all listen to the industrial, pressing patients as they're.
Well, well, no, 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 no.
That's where you're.
Hold on, the M, the M four zone is not M one or M two, the M four zone is different from the M one and M two zone. It's not a, it's not a, you know, heavy duty manufacturing zone, the M four zone is a business park, so, you know, it's, it's, it's available to a hospital.
You know, I think it's.
It's just a suggestion.
Doesn't seem crazy. I just. I think that a hospital is such a big project, a new hospital, that. If somebody really wanted to do it. We would be able to work through that process, I just thought they're often in commercial zones.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm fine with just having it as a.
Yeah, and the M four zone, well, I don't, I have my general plan in front of me, but. I think the M four zone might only be consistent in the industrial land use designation.
No, we allow.
Are we allowing it elsewhere?
Things in there.
M four.
In M four, like.
Well, no, I meant the land use designation that we allow M four.
Exactly.
So then, I mean, if that, if that's the case, then it really kind of takes on, except for the site specific. It really kind of takes on an industrial feel, and you think of where's our industrial. Designated properties. Toyon is one.
Right.
Calver cement is another, so I mean, you truly have some industrial land uses on those industrial designations.
I'm fine, I just would like to add it in.
Add it to C two?
With the C U P.
Okay.
Okay.
What, what is the zoning of the hospital across the street?
Honestly, I don't know, I thought it was public service, but.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the map.
Well, we're gonna get to those, so we can look at that as we get to each of them.
Okay. All right, so moving on. Page thirty-eight.
On. Page thirty-eight. Notice that we don't allow food and beverage, sales, hotels and motels, or restaurants in the C P zone. Our C P zone is, is sort of a weird zone anyway, but I wasn't quite sure why not, because. We, if you have offices, it's fine for somebody to want a place to eat.
Yeah, it's just, that's the way the code reads now, so if you guys feel the need to change it. Then, you know, we can certainly do so. And I don't know if this makes a difference to you, but the only location for, for cannabis dispensaries. Is in the C P zone exclusively.
I realized that.
Yeah. And you will find a lot of C P zone up against residential. And in this county, a lot of residential uses in the C P zone.
Yes.
As a pre-existing non-conforming use.
There is a tendency toward less and less office zoning in most places, we're a little different here. It, it seems like allowing more things in it might make that property still continue to have some value. I primarily, I was looking at food service. I mean, it just seems like if you wanna run out and get a lunch and having it nearby would be great, you could walk to it maybe.
Good for the environment, too.
Yes, exactly.
Get points for that.
The hotels and motels, because for us, they are more tourist serving, you know, in a more urban environment. You would, allowing a hotel and motel in your office zone would make perfect sense. I don't know that it matters here, and I think all, pretty much all hotels and motels aren't conditional use permits here anyway. So I don't know if it would hurt anything either, I just, it just jumped out at me.
Everyone else?
Up to whatever everybody else thinks.
Yeah, so just put it under restaurants, put the P under.
So restaurants permitted in the C P zone?
Yes.
Are we interested in tasting rooms as well?
Are we still building this code video here?
Well, I mean, what would be, what would?
I don't know.
We need to look at that first.
Well, the C P zone is in your commercial general plan land use.
Right.
Designation, which is similar to your other commercial zone, so I don't think it's an issue to allow restaurants, food and beverage sales. Other types of things.
Yeah, I would, probably wouldn't put a tasting room there, I don't know, that seems different.
Fine.
But somebody might.
Well, but then, then is there, I mean, if we're gonna start allowing everything in C P that you allow in C one, then you have to start questioning ourselves as to why we have the two different zones.
I thought it was just to have a place for cannabis.
Well, I mean, now, I guess that's the reason, but, you know, I mean, it, it existed prior to cannabis retail.
I thought with the, the inclination toward mixed uses everywhere, I, I consider saying, why do we have C P?
Right.
I'm not sure.
And maybe that, that's definitely a question for another day.
Yes.
But you're right, I mean.
Potentially merge.
Potentially merge it with C one, but then again, the board.
Issues with some of our little highway centers. That have a mix of offices and retail in them, and they've had to change their zoning to be able to continue to do something, and it just seems like, why?
Yeah.
Why does it really matter?
I agree.
Other than the cannabis thing, so I think that causes it.
I think the C P zone is really specific to community plans, prior community plans. So San Andres Community Plan actually had a land use designated equivalent to C P. So Arnold did the same thing. So I think that's why you find it in some, some areas versus others. Cause I don't think it was necessarily called out in every particular community plan, but that's kind of how I recall it.
I mean, I. I think we need to come back to it, but for right now, I think at least adding restaurants and maybe putting hotels and motels with a conditional use permit. Might make sense, but maybe we want to look at a map of where the. C P is.
Public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with the, I'm a little bit confused, was the intent of C P originally to provide a more, I mean. A quieter environment than C one and C two for professional, some types of professional offices?
Professional offices, yeah, and, and.
Like a doctor's office or something like that.
If you, if you look at the zoning map, you'll notice that, at least for San Andres anyway. You'll notice all the C P zoning is, is pretty close to the hospital. And so I think the intent was to allow land for doctors' offices and, you know, diagnostic facilities. Well, maybe not, that's a little extreme, but, you know, those types of things, closer to the hospital, which would be, you know. A, a better service.
So, so the, the idea that we're in, we're moving in restaurants and other thing, other, you know, other things might, might or may not be as appropriate. If we're trying to keep it quiet professional offices.
I think the feeling of the, of the commission is that, you know, a lot of your typical office use is kind of going to the wayside. I think we're finding fewer and fewer of those types of professionals holding up in brick and mortar, you know, structures. And so then, as a result, you know, we have more vacancies on properties because of the limitation, so.
So you'd end up in C one or C two, which are.
Yeah, yeah.
Are much busier places, if you had to find one, okay. Well, if you was wanting, I mean, I'm just, I kind of like the idea of professional office, but if you guys don't think it's necessary anymore, that's up to you guys.
Well, I, we're not getting rid of it right now, I think it's just trying to allow a few other things within that zone.
So if your zone's E P, you're not bankrupt.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So C, so we'll have C next to restaurants under C P, and hotels and motels?
I thought you said permitted restaurants.
We think that we need to make sure it's a restaurant.
Well, P for restaurant.
P for restaurant.
C for hotels.
Hotel motel.
And food and beverage sales, I don't feel strongly about that one, one way or the other. I mean, it seems like it would be fine, but it's, you're not gonna put a grocery store in there probably anyway, so.
Right.
Liquor store, yeah.
Yeah.
Moving on down, I know we discussed funeral parlors and interment service, services, but I, I don't. Don't funeral parlors take the body out and bury it and drop it in the cemetery? I mean, isn't that interment services?
That's why it's marked out.
Because, because when I look at the definition or description of the funeral services. Oh, well, let's see, funeral parlors is what's back here, yeah, funeral parlors, establishment primarily. Establishment primarily engaged in the preparation of the dead for burial or cremation. And conducting memorial services. But it doesn't actually.
I think before we included crematories, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then we separated the two.
You separated those.
Right.
But who's burying the the bodies?
The funeral parlor.
Okay, that's.
But they're not doing it on their.
They take it to a cemetery.
They don't have a cemetery. Preparation of the body for internment.
But they but they're providing internment services, what I'm saying. So. You know, why are we crossing out internment services?
They're not doing it on the same site. This is about what you're allowed on a site. And so you can have a funeral parlor like the one in San Andreas. Where I don't think there's behind it is the cemetery.
And they don't have a crematory.
So the idea is that this is what's happening on the site. They can do things. Other than that.
And then they can take it to a place where a cemetery is allowed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or where the bio beast composting is. But certainly not on their property.
The fact that the description talks about what they do. You know, I I thought it was missing something that it didn't say and transporting to a heavy site.
I think it was an intentional modification.
I got it. Okay.
Then I had. On the next page thirty nine. Where we have smoking lounge. And I see that it's permitted by right in C two. It seems like it should require at least an. AUP because we have learned that we need better conditioning, most likely on those.
So change the P to an A?
Uh I would. It's up to everybody to weigh in.
Help me understand why.
Because they have outdoor smoking and they their filtration systems are not all that they're cracked up to be. And so if there's a neighbor. So let's say you have another shop right next door. You might not enjoy having them next to you without. Some conditions on there.
My non-smoker again.
But there's a trend toward respiratory therapist.
Or you could permit it provided that.
With some.
Everything's indoors. If you have an outdoor component to your project, then you can get an administrative use permit.
So I would I would be fine with that. I wrote requirements, conditions, what, you know, something. We need something more. So they could be preset. It's all interior with proper exhaust and filtration. Maybe it's permitted, but we'd still have to say that somewhere.
And we can.
We could put it in the standards.
You can put additional, yeah, regulations.
For.
Yeah.
How much does an AUP cost?
Uh a thousand something.
It used to be pretty inexpensive.
It's not terribly expensive. No, I mean, nothing captures the cost of staff to do any of it.
So I. I think it's up to you guys whether we should preset some standards.
I mean, that might allow us some flexibility rather than just simply calling it outright an AUP everywhere. I mean, it is kind of a trending thing. I don't think we have a whole lot of it here, but.
New stuff all the time.
I know.
So which.
What do you guys think?
So I'm wondering, is this related to just dog with an outside facility? Or what if they have an outside facility and it's only inside?
That's what needs additional filtration. I think I think the uh the conditions vary so much with the uh.
With the location.
Location and the and what they intend to do and this sort of thing. I think the AUP is appropriate.
Across the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It affects so many people.
But well, let's see, we don't even have the dash in the CP, but. Shouldn't there be a dash there? Smoking on smoking lounge.
I don't think we should allow it in the CP.
He's just saying that we missed the dash.
Oh, we missed the dash. I thought we intend, yes, you're right. Oh, we need a dash. I I saw a dash.
Got it.
Slip past.
Cause I expected a dash.
We slip past the sexually oriented business. We're gonna deal with the the actual regulatory terms of that later.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Do we we skipped past it?
Alright, so smoking lounges, AUP, cross the board except for CP. Anything else on page thirty nine? Going once, twice?
Why not permit service stations in C two?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We have we have a conditional use permit required for service station in C two. I don't I don't I don't see the reasoning.
Don't they have to dig for underground?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Well, we 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 currently have thirty two in the in the county. Some places have seven or eight of them, and it's because we currently do not regulate them. They're allowed by right. And the ones we find out have issues. So I think going forward. We need to start looking at uh you know, allowing them based on certain types of criteria. I don't know what those are going to be. But just allowing them by right is hasn't helped us very much because we have so many of them and not enough of. Other types of things. So I think they need to be regulated a little bit.
Well, certainly here in San Andreas.
Right, well.
Also, they're often associated with a mini mart and they also have stacking distance issues dependent.
Right.
Parcel on.
Yeah. Yeah.
And on on highly. People are trying to um maximize the development of their commercial parcels by adding. Service stations onto properties that have other uses. And it becomes very problematic when we're trying to review uh what would be a ministerial application. To try to figure out what kind of an impact is the is the service station gonna have, given the fact that this property is already developed with other uses. So I I think it's I think it's important for us to be able to take have the opportunity to take a second look at it. And condition it appropriately.
Okay, and then just the idea of not. I mean, I assume somewhere in our county code, there's there's regulations applying to service stations.
Oh, absolutely. EMA is loaded full of regulations.
We're only talking about location.
Right.
Of a service station.
Right. The service station itself will be regulated through the Environmental Management Agency. Uh in addition to the Building Department.
So, well, okay, uh let's.
So were you thinking it should be allowed in the CP or you just tried to get rid of the conditional use?
Conditional use permit on the C two. But I'm I I can go along with the concerns of the.
Right.
Planning Department, so.
And who knows? I mean, maybe that'll give the county an opportunity to say, well, maybe you'd need more than just gas pumps.
Okay. Oh, what about other provisions somewhere in? Here for storage facilities? People rent storage spaces I I.
Warehousing and storage is listed under industrial use.
Warehousing and storage.
It's on page thirty nine.
And it's all regulated through the non-residential outdoor storage, which provides. Basic performance standards such as fencing, screening.
Yeah, but the thing at the indoor, okay, I I just missed it, okay? By the way, I I think you've done a remarkable job, Gina and Martha, in covering this stuff.
There's a lot to cover. I I tell you, I couldn't have done any any of this without Martha. She's amazing.
I thought.
I wish she'd come work for us.
When I was reading it, like how much of our long rambling discussions were captured.
Yeah.
In just a few words.
When Martha said, got it, I I.
She's got it.
And yeah, and I just trying for me to absorb all the various animal situations. Made me appreciate the immense scope of what you've been dealing with. So anyhow.
Well, I wanna say I wanna say my thank yous to um the things you the things that I asked for that you put in. I recognize and I'm seeing them and I'm saying nothing about them because I don't want you to talk about it. Thank you for that. The other thing, but Gabriel did bring up a good question. Uh a question that's been floating around. The planning commissioner brought it up at a previous hearing. Where we are requiring permits. How do I find out in advance? What the types of conditions might apply to that use in that zone? And the reason this is important is because we we wanna reduce the conflict associated with zoning. We want somebody looking to buy or rent or lease a per a parcel to know in advance, okay. These are things I should, I'm gonna have to comply with. Is this the best site for me? Or should I buy another site? Or should I lease another site?
Yeah.
Cause the situation that comes up that's most difficult for the planning commissioners is when somebody says, well, you know. That zoo that zone is up that I bought this property with this dream in my head to do X. And it's allowed in the zone with a use permit. And now you're telling me that I have to do all these expensive things to get the use permit, or I won't get a use permit. And it's like, if I'd have known that, I would have bought a different parcel. And and so I guess what I'm saying is I don't expect them to be in the code. But like, will there be applications for that permit that will then explain what the conditions are? So if I'm gonna go. I wanna I'm looking for a site to purchase to put a service station.
I wish it was that easy, Tom. You know, and unfortunately, when that process includes. Ink it it includes um um many other agencies. Local agencies, state and sometimes federal agencies. And every one of those agencies has regulations and those regulations are forever changing. So. Um you we can't really come up with a standard set of conditions that says, you know, everything shall. You know, this shall apply for here on out to whatever use, you know, but the process includes. Reaching out to each one of these agencies that might have but be affected and and we engage them into the process. And and through the process, we get written conditions. Um you know, whether they're just a reiteration of code requirements or whether it's necessary for health and safety reasons. Um so there's lots of different reasons. And then, of course, we've got mitigation on top of that. Um and we don't know what that's gonna look like until you get through the sequel analysis. So. You know, and I guess in a perfect world, that would be great, but unfortunately, that's just not.
It's called due diligence.
I'm trying to facilitate due diligence essentially.
The closest thing we can have to that would be a pre-developed application.
Right.
And even through that process, uh it is still not, depending on who decides to participate. At least we can tell them from the county standpoint, what you can expect. If Caltrans is gonna ask you to uh you know, to get an encroachment permit, all we can tell you is go get an encroachment permit. We can't really tell you what else Caltrans is gonna ask for.
Because they have their own process.
So but at least through a pre-developed application, if I were gonna put a gas station or any other important land use. I would request a pre-developed application so that we can at least advise you of you might be. Getting the following conditions.
Right. And I've I've pointed out that the.
Thank you.
All the provisions that I'm proposing for the animal uh uses. A lot of them come under the the Animal Control Officer and who issues permits. And I on what I'm proposing is that we at least cite to that fact. Uh then we're gonna have to consider um whether. We want to permit. Permit the the use in a zone. With a P and an asterisk, uh the asterisk being that you have to get a permit from the Animal Control Officer. Or are we sometimes gonna wanna ask for administrative use permits as a zoning thing? In addition to the permit requirements of the Animal Control Officer. What I'm the form I have proposed is that we permit it subject to. His permit being his or her permit being issued. Uh which brings up the question of how does Tom access? The stuff that I gave you this morning. You wanna just.
How?
Yeah, do you wanna just leave a copy at the at the desk and?
There's one right there.
Yes, so Tom, if you wanna know what we're talking about on what I've proposed. Uh I think the planning department would be able to provide you.
Can just forward me the email, huh?
Oh, I think we could scan it and before the next meeting, it could be put up as as part of the meeting materials.
You made public already, so it's.
Yes, exactly. So.
Okay, great. So let me ask one more question regarding the the condition, the use permits. So but we in addition to the pre-application uh 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 review. All of your existing permits are public information, right? So if I wanted to see a a a gas station permit. That you gave out last year or two years ago, I could also see that to get as part of my due diligence to say, okay. These are the kind of permit conditions I might expect.
Yeah, you could.
Theory, I mean, you're not gonna find any relative to gas stations because they're currently permitted. However, yes, if there's it all the all the um discretionary applications um that we have on file. That have been deemed complete to process are all public information and that would be the entire file from start to finish. Which would include assuming that they've gone through um a planning commission approval. Would have a resolution with conditions of approval. So absolutely, and and we've done that before, you know, with with individuals that have come into the department. And specifically asked about particular uses um and what to expect. We'll find an example that's recent and we'll say, hey, you know, this may not exactly apply to you, but. Here's an example of of a of a the most recent application that was approved for the same or similar use.
Cool. Well, so the only situation we're gonna have challenge difficulties is where it's a newly permitted use. Where there haven't been conditions placed on it before and we're starting from scratch, like new event stuff. That's all gonna be challenging. Okay, great. Thank you.
Also, we can talk about this a little more when we get to the the section that discusses conditional use permits and the processes.
Right.
Cause they all say what the procedures are and the required findings, which are a pretty big hint to people. Of what kinds of things we're gonna be looking at.
Right.
Or the secret checklist.
Right.
Thank you.
And it's it's hard to say exactly what's gonna derive from the public hearing. Because we all know what public hearings are like. You find out all kinds of new information in a public hearing, whether it's. You know, um adjacent property owners coming forward saying, oh, there's a significant impact or. Uh you know, something that was revealed in a traffic analysis. I mean, you you just you just don't know until you're there.
Right.
Okay, so we're back on page forty and forty one, which we know we're gonna come back to telecommunications. Is there anything else? I I had a question on page forty one seventeen oh six thirty. Residential uses in commercial zones. And I just thought it was interesting that the. That the there's the specific dimensions called out. Commercial uses shall occupy the ground floor of buildings for a minimum of forty feet. Or twenty five percent of the development. or twenty-five percent of the development site frontage, whichever is greater, the minimum depth of those areas shall be sixty-five feet. And the minimum floor-to-ceiling height shall be fourteen feet. I, that seems very specific without knowing anything about the building or the parcel that we're talking about. I understand the percentages and the trying to keep a storefront facing.
And the idea is really to ensure that, or clarify what would be considered behind a commercial use. And so the forty feet or twenty-five percent of the frontage is like, what's that minimum amount of frontage that is a usable? Like, a commercial use could actually go into. So you can get, you know, at the front counter, the planners are looking at something that is maybe ten by ten area, and somebody's claiming, oh, this is my commercial use. See, my residential is behind there. And so the idea is, these are commercial zones. You need to have a commercial use, and we're gonna put in some type of minimum standards that maybe have potential to be, actually be usable as commercial.
Right. I understand that. It was just the specific numbers, like the sixty-five feet of depth. The width of the, I understand all that, was the other numbers that I thought were interesting.
And the, the depth, so it's not really a magic kind of number. And, but it's, you know, what's a reasonable depth that you could accommodate the commercial use within it? You need some sort of depth in order to have the back office, you know, the kitchen, cafe area, storage, et cetera. So you need some depth.
If it's a newsstand, you don't need a much depth.
If the county is comfortable with a newsstand, qualifying as enough commercial space in a commercial zone to allow residential, then you could amend that. But my understanding is your intent of commercial zones is to have commercial with the residential as kind of on top or, again, behind in a secondary matter.
I have a question, public comment. I have a question. Michelle, how, you're familiar with Murphy's. How many of the commercial buildings there have sixty-five feet of depth in them?
Well, that's exactly what got my attention. And I was thinking primarily the historic center being the problem with seeing this, where you might have an old house and they've taken the front parlor and turned it into some sort of retail space. But they're living above it, and they might still have a kitchen in the back. And of course, those are existing, so they're probably gonna not fall under here. But this applies to all of those commercial zones. Not such an issue in C two, probably.
What would you suggest?
I don't know what they suggest because I understand the goal here is to not let somebody build something new that is essentially an apartment with a newsstand tacked on the front of it.
Like, maybe I can understand. So your concern would be, well, what if the building is only forty feet deep? Do I have...
Yeah.
Is that it?
Right.
So that we can clarify, like, it has to be the complete bottom floor or a minimum of sixty-five. I think the idea is, you know, don't do this big building and then a little tiny...
Or percentage of the floor plate on the main level.
Yeah.
The street level.
Right. That would be, that would be more appropriate.
No, that's the width, though, not the depth. So, yeah, I just think if you guys could look at it and see if there's a way to make it fit the, or say, at the discretion of, you know, the...
So with a use permit, you could have, you could waive that.
Yeah.
So that, there is that opportunity. So the county can look at it and say, oh, okay, this alternative makes sense.
Then I'm fine, as long as we can soften it up.
I have a more general introductory-type question with this section, seventeen oh six oh three oh. Seems to me we're relying upon the content of the title to talk about what the scope of the section is in both the county code, section one point oh, one point oh six oh, and then our proposed draft seventeen point oh two, point oh two zero, point eight, point three, both provide that the title, chapter, and section headings should not be deemed to govern, limit, modify, or any manner to affect the scope, meaning or intent of the provision. So I think you need some introductory statement. You know, when residential uses are combined with commercial uses, the following requirements apply, or something like that. Because we can't rely on the title to provide the scope of the section.
Well, in this case, residential uses in commercial zones is accurate, right?
Well, it's accurate, but it is not... I'll defer to county council if this...
I think that the section in one point oh, I think...
I think we can add that. I think that we can add that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we don't...
I mean, it seems like the intent here is to minimize the amount of residential in commercial zones and preserve them for commercial activities as much as possible. Right now, we're bending over backwards to provide residential opportunities, so, yeah.
I think it is necessary to maintain your commercial...
This is to avoid a nudge-nudge, wink-wink, commercial use.
So are we okay with two? Or do you think it needs...
I think it needs help with...
The modification.
Especially the minimum depth, sixty-five.
Well, right below it, it says, "The requirements may be waived through conditional use permit approval where the planning commission finds that the configuration of the site and/or the character of the surrounding area is such that commercial street frontage is not appropriate or warranted." Maybe make that so that it applies to all of those items.
At least gives you an option, an out.
Yeah.
Well, but again, how expensive is a conditional use permit?
Well, I'm just going back.
It could be as expensive as fifty-three hundred dollars or twenty-seven hundred.
Is your concern primarily just the historic buildings? Should we somehow exclude?
I think it's H, it's the historic centers.
Yeah.
Just because the parcels themselves may be limited.
Right.
So maybe, maybe that would be a way to...
Or, I mean, percentage of the depth of the ground floor. You could, I mean, sixty-five feet, it seems rather draconian. As you say, sometimes these buildings are sixty-five feet deep.
Yeah.
So if you have a, you know, more than fifty percent of the depth of the first floor should be commercial or more than sixty percent, whatever you want.
Okay, let's look it, let's note.
I think we understand the concern. I think Gina and I can look up some different options. There's, I just wanna think through stuff because what I wouldn't wanna leave you with is, you know, a small structure and then they're only required to have five feet or something. You know, I just wanna think through.
Yeah.
I think we understand the concern.
That's great.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything in that area of pages forty-two and forty-three?
Forty-two, we need the DU equals dwelling unit again. And maybe I'm misunderstanding the, around the middle of the page, maximum floor area ratio, non-residential portion of the development. Does that mean if you have a residential portion of the development, you have an unlimited amount of floor ratio?
The residential portion is, that is dictated by the density.
By the density?
Right. So for the commercial area, you're looking at FAR, the floor-area ratio. For the residential portion, you're looking at density.
Okay, so that it's just the different requirements applied at the residential portion?
Yeah.
Okay. I do think it'd be helpful, under additional regulations, to refer to section seventeen point oh two, point oh three, oh, point G for determining FAR.
And if you have a mixed use, how do you apply both things? Proportionally?
So for the, for the non-residential area, you're gonna look at what the FAR is. So what the square footage of non-residential is. And then for the residential part, you're gonna look at the density.
But do you end up with something that's all bloated?
Yeah.
And maybe if, if, I understand looking at the residential requirements for a single building that's residential, but when you have the mix, it isn't that you...
Are they cumulative, what we're trying to...
It just sounds as if, as if you can add, you can look and see how much you require, you're permitted to have residentially. And then you look at the FAR for the commercial, and we end up with another story or two, which is not...
Well, but you're limited in stories and height. You're just limited in stories and height.
Right.
So you can't go, just because you could add square footage, you can't if you're already at the maximum height. Or the setbacks, you can't go beyond the setbacks. You can't, you still have to provide parking, so...
So it's site-specific, right? You're gonna, they're gonna have to design the development to fit with using those...
I think it's kind of still awkward, but it's self-limiting because you only have so much property.
Right.
And you have to provide for all those other things.
Well, okay, but it, I mean, if the FAR gives you permission to build on the entire parcel...
No, it entitles you to that much square footage, not necessarily equal to the entire parcel, but not necessarily covering the entire parcel.
That's your maximum. You're gonna have to walk it back because you've got all kinds of other things to fit on that property.
To get that, with your parking requirements and other things.
Public comment?
Yes.
So let me run through an example here. Let's say we're in C one and we have a twenty unit per acre max, and we have a floor area ratio of two point oh max, and we have a thirty-five foot height limit. Let's say we got all of the two point oh floor area ratio in two stories. Unlikely with parking requires, maybe we had parking underground or something. So we have two stories, two stories above ground, so we're at twenty feet. So maybe I only, and so I maybe only have one more story worth of height at thirty-five feet. So probably, so if I could fit ten studio units above that, then I'd be okay because I'd only be thirty-five feet, I'd be thirty feet high. I'd have all my commercial and I have ten of my apartments. So now, if I fight with that and said, well, you know what? I think I want more apartments and less commercial, then I could put maybe one floor of commercial and two floors of apartments, and then I'd only get a one point oh floor area ratio and twenty units, and I'd still be under the thirty-five height. Am I in the, is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's great. That's a lot of flexibility. Yeah.
So these are basically just the maximums and whatever you can do. And it's encouraging you to keep the entire street-level floor commercial because that's permitted and it's conditional use permit to do something different. So I'm satisfied.
Okay, down on the front and street side, I take it, sidewalk is irrelevant on this. I mean, it's, if you're, if the property line is on the interior side of the sidewalk, you do it from the property line, but it's, I guess what I'm trying to say is that it's, sidewalks are irrelevant. You're looking at either property lines or the distance from the center of the street.
Right, so assuming that a property boundary is the center line of the street?
The street right-of-way.
The street right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah.
The street right-of-way should include the sidewalk. So the sidewalk should be included in the easement, sometimes.
Most of the time.
Maybe.
But where's the property line?
Well, that's gonna have to be identified where the property boundary is.
I don't think it's Murphy's, the sidewalk. I think those are...
Yeah, it's a... I mean, there's all kinds of different scenarios.
Anyhow, it shouldn't be, the sidewalk shouldn't pose a problem, given these...
No.
No, it shouldn't. And quite frankly, the property line should not include public right-of-way. Public right-of-way, although in the county where it's not well delineated, you find people that assume that this open patch of land between where the improved roadway ends and where my property begins is actually my property, and that is not the case. The difference between a road right-of-way and an improved road could be as many as, we've seen instances of thirty to forty feet, whereby those forty feet that you're looking at that you think is just open area is actually part of, or right-of-way that has not been improved.
Well, it might be part of somebody's property, but there's an easement through it, and some people might confuse the property line. It might be technically on their property, but they don't understand how restricted they are by the easement boundary, the right-of-way boundary.
Yeah.
And traditionally, in places like Murphy's, where our road right-of-way might only be twenty feet, they haven't enforced the thirty feet from the center line because it would wipe out a good portion of the property.
Right.
Even though usually it says whichever is greater, they've defaulted to the zero. And then the sidewalk has to be on your property because there's nowhere else to put it. I mean, this makes sense for typical new development. Those historic centers just don't fit now.
Well, like I said, our, the property our house is on, property line is way across the street.
Yeah.
On the other side of the street. Anyhow, okay. Page forty-three. So if a commercial, a building in the commercial zone is located next to another building in the commercial zone, can their walls touch?
Yes. If they meet the building code requirements for fire resistance and...
They could have zero property line, yes.
Okay. And if it's, if it's adjacent to a residential zone...
Setbacks are required.
Yeah, but it's like a fifth of a foot.
No, it's five feet.
Well, wait a minute.
It's zero comma five. There should probably be a...
Oh, zero comma. I'm seeing points.
Not zero point five.
Zero and then five feet is, maybe we need a foot marker, though.
Something, something needs to go there because I was, I was seeing a decimal point.
Yeah, me too. I, that's how I read it the first time.
And you do something along those lines?
Yep. And then I realized when I saw the twenty that they weren't seeing that.
Okay, so you guys can take care of that.
Yeah.
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 Public comment?
Sure.
It's occurring to me that we are learning a lot today about mixing commercial and residential uses. And that applicants may, or potential applicants may also like to learn some of this stuff. That combination of floor area ratio and density and height was very interesting. If you're planning on doing some sort of public education, either a pamphlet or something, after this comes out, you know, some illustrations like that would be really helpful. Because we want to encourage, the Calders Planning Corporation wants to encourage this kind of mixed use in downtown areas. And anything you can do to, to make it less mysterious would be great. We'll try and do what we can on our website, but, you know, people go to you guys first.
I think one saving grace of the situation is that somebody who's doing a mixed-use development is using a professional to do their plans and their design work. Most likely, those people are familiar with how to read this and how to play the off the different parts. Whereas it, it could be quite confusing for an owner who just had a brilliant idea and isn't quite sure how to implement it. So
But don't they have to get they have to have architectural plans?
They do, but sometimes they begin their planning without help, and then are mad when they can't actually do, because they didn't read all of it. Because it's a lot. I get calls from people who wanna complain to me about how somebody told them something.
Michelle and I are thinking of the same kind of people, right? They saw the lot, or they saw the property, or they saw the, the building, and they said, "I've gotta have it for my thing, my dream."
Yeah.
And then they got to this section and they get really confused, or, you know, so
At that point, you can only hope people pick up the phone.
As a switch list item showing people how to apply things might be a long-term thing. I don't think that we're gonna be able to to adequately address that now. Somebody should make a YouTube video, Tom, maybe you wanna do that.
Okay, are we ready to move on to industrial zones? Boy, we are really making some
You know, we beat these up so much, the first time I felt like you guys did such a good job, that I really had very few
Julie has a question.
I just wanna know when we might consider a coffee break.
You need a coffee break?
I can wait if you wanna go further. Well, I was wondering if like before
But we're only going till three o'clock, so if we need a break, then let's
Well, we're only going till three, that's fine.
If you feel like we're making good enough progress, I think we should quit at three and not wear everybody out. Okay.
I, I'd just like to interject that in my ignorance about all these other use descriptions, or which I would consider definitions, my suggestions were made without the knowledge that we defined animal sanctuary, animal shelter, veterinary services, et cetera. I think my suggestions should, still are worthy of consideration, but I'd just point that out.
That, yes, that some things are already handled.
Some things have been handled, but they are handled consistently with Title VI, or someone else.
Okay, so let's talk about industrial zones. I got nothing. I mean, on the first two pages. Anybody have anything?
Let's just say
I mean, we have the whole animal section to come back to. And telecommunications to ours.
I, I, I still have, I understand what you mean by emergency shelter. Not talking about disasters, but emergency as a term is defined on page two fifty-four as a sudden unexpected event or something. I can't even read my own writing, but it's, you know, it we have a
If it's an emergency, do you have time to get it now?
It just seems to me that we've got a, got a inconsistency, or discordance at least, between the definition of emergency in the back.
I think also the idea here is that somebody, a public agency or something, would build a shelter in advance that can be used in an emergency.
Or have designated places like churches or school auditoriums.
And, and, and emergency shelter in this particular context is, is a place where you, you know, severe weather, thunderstorm, things of that nature, where people can house temporarily. That is what emergency shelters are, are designed for, up to and including other types of use.
But the emergency shelter is provided in here.
I know, I, I, I'm agreeing with you.
For the homeless.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so
Well, I mean, if homelessness is designed, is defined as an emergency, which is the need is, there's an emergency in the need for a homeless person to find shelter. That's another way to look at it.
It is, but anyhow, I think we need to, we need to refine our, our various definitions, and also we need to provide for what I consider the emergency shelters, the disaster relief filters.
Yes.
That needs to be covered in here somewhere.
Absolutely, it should be.
And I don't, I don't think it is.
That is covered, that post-disaster is covered. Emergency shelters as a land use is a term of art that is regulated by or required by the state, I would say that, that required to have in your housing element. The term emergency is also defined, because there are are times in your code where just that term emergency, not as a title of something, is needed to be defined, so while I think if you maybe put those together and think they, just look at those need to be kind of coordinated, there are other reasons why they're termed how they are or written how they are defined, so
I understand that, but I don't see where the disaster relief type of shelters, where that is covered in our, in this code.
And we had a whole section for that.
Emergency shelter.
Emergency shelter is.
Are you looking at this one?
I was, I was looking at the
On to thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yeah, I know. I don't see where
Your post-disaster recovery, so that's actually an existing whole chapter that you have, that we're just carrying forward, so it's a placeholder in this document, because that whole section is, just like cannabis, we're just carrying it forward without changes, so it's safe to learn this document.
In the tables, Martha?
Well, it's not a, it's not a specific use that's numerated. Because it's a temporary.
It's a, it's a temporary
If it's temporary, it doesn't belong in the table?
Well, it's not a specific use, so the, the code section says exactly what that is, and where it applies, and under what conditions it applies.
Okay, where is it?
Well, we didn't, we didn't roll it forward, it's existing.
Well, so I, I, can I
So the language isn't in here yet, because we just put a placeholder, because we're not touching it, it's what's existing in code.
Just for the technical ease, when this comes forward in final draft form, are we gonna have seventeen ninety-five and that, this other chapter included, so that we don't have to remember to add it in manually?
When do you want it?
So, I, at some point, my, we publish in MuniCode, and it's gonna, you know, if we don't remember to capture seventeen ninety-five or post-disaster recovery, because you guys haven't touched it, I could see us getting rid of, rescinding what we have, putting a new zoning update in place.
No, it will be, so right now, in that, right now in the document here, there's a placeholder for chapter seventeen twenty-three, post-disaster recovery. So there is a placeholder for that, and we will include it.
I don't wanna have to think about that later, okay.
I mean, we, yeah, we deliberately left those things out, because, I mean, specifically, look at the cannabis regulation.
Yeah.
Is huge, and so, you know, if we're not doing anything with it, and we're not, we're not amending it, then why include it, all that paper?
There it is, right there.
People just start
For people to study and
The table of content.
Oh, gee.
Dang it.
Okay, but, but the fact that it's not in the table is because it would be a temporary use.
Right. So if it has a permanent use, like it is
Right, right.
The fire station.
Yeah, I understand that.
Right.
It's just that with the
It talks about the replacement of burnt structures, and it gives you a specific timeframe, and you know, there's a, there's a lot that's rolled into it, and it applies to, you know, an area that was impacted. It's all written into the standard.
Okay, that's seventeen twenty-three.
It's a moving target.
Yeah.
And, and we don't have any other temporary uses that are listed in these tables?
Any other temporary uses? You mean that are
But, but, but my understanding is, is that it's not listed in this table.
Well, but, because it doesn't apply to a specific zone, is what we're saying. So the standards for post-disaster recovery don't specifically apply to a zone, they apply to a disaster area. And depending on what it is, you know, you have to read through the, through the statute to see where it applies to your specific situation.
Okay, but we're not, we're not gonna have a problem that since it's not listed in the table, it's not a permitted temporary use?
No.
No, you won't have a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
It'll probably make more sense when you actually read it.
Yes, I like
Yeah.
You, you could, you could say that fifteen times.
Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so is there anything on page forty-two, forty-three? Before we
Covered that.
I have a cryptic note, I don't know what it means. Sure was really important.
You're on forty-six and forty-seven?
Yes.
I mean, just to reiterate my point earlier about hospitals in M4 zone, it says, "The M4 zone is intended to provide a zone for comprehensive employment generating development." Hospitals generate employment more than any other land uses that we have around here, except maybe for a government center.
So we do have hospitals listed as conditionally permitted in M4.
Good.
That's great.
I have in my notes, Martha, you were going to review restaurants in M1 and M2. I'm not exactly sure what the question was that you were gonna review, but that, that maybe we were gonna have a P under M1.
Um, let me look at mine upside down.
But we had some
We had discussion
Didn't we discuss, like, the brewery, microbrewery situation where there, and distilleries where they're actually, you know, brewing and distilling and, and maybe have a food component?
Sea zones, but they would be allowed in M zones, right? Because they're food or beverage manufacturing.
And I think we
A big question mark and an arrow to M2, so I had some questions about
With restaurants?
M2, yeah, so over restaurants, in various places, so
I know we discussed it. I mean, it, you know, food serving is not included in food preparation. You know, it's a my understanding
I remember, I remember we had a question about outdoor dining being allowed in M1 and M2,
Yeah.
but not restaurants, and then we had a, I was confused about that, and then they clarified that.
Well, we're all in agreement that we discussed this before.
Unfortunately, we all have poor enough memories not to recall this.
I was gonna say, unfortunately, my notes on this aren't clear.
Well, the explanation I got was that, that even if there weren't restaurants in M1 or M2, you might have outdoor dining, person to like a special event or something like that. And so, that's why they were, that's why it was allowed in M1 and M2, even though it wasn't attached to a particular restaurant.
Right, and, and food and beverage sales are allowed, so if you had like a deli counter at the grocery store, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
But not like a sit-down Denny's or something like that, or, right?
Right.
That's what I was always explaining, it made perfect sense.
So what was, the way it is now in this draft, you could have a, a deli counter where they're selling food and beverage, but not a place to sit down?
Right, and you can have a tasting room, but not a restaurant?
You can't, no, you can have a place to sit down. It's just that, as written, you couldn't have a restaurant as the primary use. So you could have food and beverage sales, so you have a little convenience mart, and you have a deli, and then you have a table, right, for somebody to sit down and eat their sandwich.
Indoors or outdoors?
Right.
So that might include, Martha, a facility that might make sausage. And they would have the little, maybe a retail counter in the, in the front of the facility that they would sell the sausage, and then maybe you could get one that's cooked in a bun and take it to go or something.
I think that's the tasting room, you could see before you order three hundred
Yeah, or like, yeah, you're food and beverage manufacturing, you're a sausage factory, you have a retail component, you have, people can eat, yes, you can taste. She's making facilities.
Yeah, okay.
And like it says, no offices, but obviously you can have an office that is an accessory use to your manufacturing.
Right.
Okay, and you cannot have a desk, you have to stand up. Not a compatible use.
You can go next door to the deli counter, so don't worry.
Okay.
Anything else?
I, I still have a question there, now I'm confused, I wasn't before, but now I am.
Uh-oh.
So, um what's the, so you can have a commercial kitchen that prepares your sausage and serves your sausage that you made on-site. Can you have a commercial kitchen that prepares anything else? Because if it can prepare anything else, how is that different than a restaurant?
I don't think it's a commercial kitchen in the way that you're thinking like a restaurant. I think it's just that you can prepare sufficiently to provide samples of your product.
I was thinking of Lockford meat.
Yeah, me too.
As an example.
So they, they serve, they cook it for you there?
I don't think that they have
I tried to get a sandwich and I couldn't get one.
I don't think they, I, I just added that in.
No, there's wrong.
I added that part in, but yeah, no, but you know, they bring in, you know, they bring in a carcass and, and, you know, they'll they'll butcher the, you know, the animal and, and grind it up and mix the sausage and stuff the sausage and smoke the sausage and put it out on the counter for sale, and, and like Michelle said, you could have an incident where, you know, a situation where you could come in and taste. I've never had those brought worse, can I taste those before I buy them? It's kind of a situation, and then maybe you could get I've never had those brought worse. Can I taste those before I buy them? It's kind of a situation. And then maybe you could get a hot dog to go, or a sausage sandwich to go.
Okay, so this comes up a lot in, in Amador with the tasting rooms and stuff for, which basically become restaurants. And so, how are we, i- if, if we're saying, I mean, obviously someone's preparing sausage, they have some, you're gonna have to comply with the health codes for cooking and all that kind of stuff. So they're gonna have a, and, so, is it, is it, it's limited, tasting rooms are limited to products that you produce, as opposed to products that you don't produce? Or?
I suppose we could do that if, if that's really what the intent is. Maybe we should be specific.
I think it would matter if, let's say it's, um, they resell a lot of products, like Cisco, so it's a distribution center for them. I guess it'd be possible that they would, they were items that they are selling to retailers. It just doesn't seem like that's likely to happen. I think maybe the term tasting room might not be right, which, because in our area, tasting rooms are so associated with wine or beer.
Yeah.
Um, so perhaps it, we can come up with a different term that, that explains that it's samples of the product you're selling.
How did we define it?
So samples of product being manufactured and sold on site? I mean, we can get a little bit more.
Yeah, because.
Where, where's the definition?
We don't have one.
That's what we're.
So operations, grain tasting of food and beverage products that are available for purchase.
Right.
Yes.
But I, but I think what, I think what I'm hearing, though, is we want this to be something other than a typical restaurant, or what we consider a typical tasting room, and, or a typical retail store.
I think it's okay to not have restaurants in, in M one and M two the way we have.
Right.
Now that we're talking about it, because when you read this description of M two, it's like objectionable odors, it, manufacturing, processing, storage, and similar industrial uses which may create objectionable conditions.
But going back to that example of Lockford Meat, I think it's pers-, I think it's very appropriate in an M, in an industrial zone.
Tasting is fine, the restaurant.
Right, right.
Is, that's fine that that restaurant's not allowed. You have to be in the M four zone to have a restaurant. But I'm looking down here at retail sales, so food and beverage sales. Is it retail sales or wholesale sales?
It's under retail, sounds.
I know, it's under retail, which sounds like a grocery store. But that's not what we mean. We mean they're selling it.
Martha's getting there.
I mean, it's industrial, right?
Right.
But I guess it could be a big warehouse store of some kind.
You mean like a Costco?
Total Wine.
Total Wine.
I mean, general retail, a garden shop, because we talked about not wanting to encourage people driving through the M one and M two, because the conditions are not really like, where, where you invite people to your little cute retail shop. Then you belong in M four.
Well, in the interest of GHG, um, if, if you had a, let's say, a large-scale manufacturing facility in the M two zone, it would be nice if those people could find a place to buy sandwiches, so they don't have to drive all the way across town. I mean, that's another way to look at it.
No, I agree with that, but I'm looking at this whole list and saying they're all permitted by right, and they sound like maybe what, exactly what we're trying not to encourage.
Right.
So should we not allow food and beverage sales in general retail in M one and M two, and just allow it in M four?
Maybe, but I do think you have to, I, I agree with Gabriel that we need to have like a lunch shop or something, you know.
Because I, I think those kinds of industries are gonna go where they find opportunity. If there's an opportunity to sell sandwiches, and it happens to be in an industrial zone, because they're, you know.
But you think of the location of our industrial zones, and I mean, you, you've got, you know, I, I honestly, I can't see somebody locating a restaurant in an industrial zone where we would typically find our industrial zones, because it's so far away from anything else that you're only going to be servicing the people that work in the industrials, and there's very few comparing to all of our, your commercial zones and within your community centers.
Today, they could be very few. What's, what's, what may happen ten years from now?
Well, I don't know. I mean, all of our industrial zones down in Toya are created back in the early eighties, and they're still just now getting developed, and it's very slow.
Places where, well, people will go out of their way to go to a really cool hip restaurant or brewery in industrial zone. And they feel like they're in the M crowd because they're going to this hidden one. That is kind of a thing now.
But I think there's also kind of an industrial component to that whole thing, with just
Right.
the manufacturing of the, the beverage, right?
That's true.
So, I'm looking at the retail sales primarily, and wondering what, if they should either be an AUP, or should be retail sales associated with production and manufacturing only?
But then you get, well, okay, they make sausage, so you're not gonna sell them Coke, too? You know, I mean.
Well, no, I understand, but that would.
Are you?
Associated with it.
It just takes some graphic finance. Hi, Martha.
Hello, Tom, see you speaking. Hello?
Yes, Tom. We can hear you, Tom. Go ahead.
Oh, he's got on the phone.
So I have a question. Where would food trucks?
Uh, you have the wrong number. Sorry, bye-bye.
Yeah.
So, what would food trucks?
Yeah, Joyce, versus in your though.
Tom, we can hear you on your phone.
Where would food trucks follow this? This is a really good question. I'll tell you why, because if you drive around.
They are regulated differently now.
They're everywhere.
What we're trying, what we're trying to do is to try to get a, a food vending ordinance that would incorporate food trucks and push carts and things of that nature. That is, that is what we're trying to do. And, and those kinds of uses would go to places where there is an audience. You know, a food truck would serve an industrial area as, as much as it would serve a commercial area.
And we currently make provisions for those, um, mobile food units. Um, depending on, you know, if they can show us that they're in a commercial or industrial area, um, and not otherwise, you know, taking up parking that is allocated to a business, they've got safe ingress and egress, then, um, you know.
Well, my point is if.
Through some very minor paperwork, they're allowed to set up, um.
My point is if they, if they can sustain enough business to be there, why wouldn't you have a sandwich shop in your vicinity?
Yeah, same idea.
Well, I just, I'm thinking maybe the M, we leave everything in the M one, but maybe we look at M two and and limit those a little bit more, because that is where that.
Your heavy industrial is.
Duty stuff is going on where you, it's not really intended for people to drop in and walk through.
That gets back to what my notes indicated we might have done last time, was having a P under a M one for restaurants.
Yeah. That might make sense, and that's probably what my question mark for the whole line of M two has to do with is just, did we look at this properly?
Um, but.
We're bogging down. We definitely are stopping.
We were making progress.
But, but bringing up food trucks, I mean, again, is that something that doesn't, doesn't fit in here? Wouldn't be in the tables?
Food trucks are generally a temporary thing in an area like this. They come in for the day, and then they have to go back to someplace.
They have a commissary. There's some other.
Station, so they're not, it's like Esperanza here.
It could be here in M one, though.
Food trucks, um, as far as, if they park on private property, so within the right of ways, a different regulation. Um, those are covered as temporary uses for, with standards for mobile vending. So those are covered. You do have provisions for those in this. And I think what I'm hearing is to allow restaurants as permitted in M one, and then in M two, look at not allowing food and beverage sales or general retail. So changing those Ps to dashes. Am I hearing that, those correctly?
That was my inclination. I don't know that everyone agrees.
I can agree.
I can agree.
Can we quit before three five?
Okay, so it's P for restaurants and M one?
And M one.
And what is the?
Under retail sales, food and beverage sales and retail sales. Um, not allowed in M two?
So general retail and food and beverage sales?
I, I think, like, retail doesn't belong in M two, period. I mean, if we look at what the description for that zone is.
Yeah, I guess I just look at, like, a, a feed and farm store in a building.
It's like processing, assembly, research, wholesale, and storage use, trucking terminals, public and quasi-public uses, and similar and compatible uses.
Yeah, I guess when I look at, when I think of a building materials store and a feed, some farm supply store, I'm thinking of all of the outdoor storage that comes along with it. We're talking, you know, gates, fencing, watering troughs, um, obviously, large stacks of building materials and you know, that could encumber, be in outbuildings or, you know. It, it just seems like such a big, massive use with all this outdoor storage that really kind of doesn't really fit into our commercials.
But it's for the public.
Yeah.
It's not manufacturing, it's not production. So I think M one and M four is fine for those. It's only M two that I'm questioning.
Oh, okay.
And just put dashes in all, everything under retail sales?
I, that's my thought.
No retail, no retail sales at all in M two?
Yes, only, only from M two.
I thought you were talking about across the board.
No, 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 just M two.
Now, Martha, you said that food trucks are covered. Are they covered by inference? Or are they, I, I don't see any listing of food trucks in this.
Because they're under the temporary stuff.
Well, well, we have temporary uses of a category of that. Temporary, no. Not a temporary investment.
Or in there.
We have.
Hang on, we're searching.
We're searching, yeah. At least you guys can search on a computer.
Mobile vending.
Faster than we're doing it.
Uh, Tim?
I'm saying.
Page one sixty-four.
Excuse me?
One six four. So non-residential zones.
Mobile vending.
That's great. And then, but we don't list that in our tables?
It's a temporary use, and temporary uses are listed. It re, so temporary uses refers you to this section, and then this has all the temporary use allowances.
Okay, so we have, do we have something saying temporary uses are not listed?
No, so we say down here on the bottom of each one of our tables, you've got temporary uses, and it points you back to the temporary use section.
Yep, it's the very last item under other uses.
Yeah. I knew I'd seen it in there somewhere. So, okay, so then we have the PTA, and that's covered in in section seventeen point two five, point two two zero.
So back to retail sales in M two, are we all in agreeance that it, uh, retail sales should not be allowed in M two zone?
It seems like we all agree.
Yes.
No on M two, yes in M one and M four. With restaurants allowed in M one.
Yes.
And we want.
Well, and M four.
Do we want additional regulations under food, food preparation that allows?
Well, yeah, that's the question, is under M two.
The manufacturing, uh, the manufactured product to be sold, and do we want tasting?
Is tasting still allowed in M two?
As of right now.
I think tasting with our new definition that Gina was working on this.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. And then food preparation, I think is fine, as long as food preparation of what they are maybe manufacturing or selling, not food prep like just for fun.
I'm gonna make you a sandwich.
We want a sandwich in the break room, that's fine.
Right.
That's like food preparation, like the, uh, commercial kitchen or catering, or.
Right.
Yeah, it's like the, um, non-customer facing food prep.
So the, the food preparation, I, I'm sorry, Martha, I'm not even looking at it, but the fruit, the food preparation, um, is defined, the definition includes, um, like a catering service? Is that what we're saying?
Well, it's, um, preparing or packaging food primarily for off-site consumption, including.
I think that makes.
Okay.
That makes.
Catering kitchen, like.
Production is covered.
Right, right.
Manufacturing section, so. Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good. I'm gonna write.
Are we good?
K over my, um, question mark, and assume.
That's good.
Did we turn a page?
Well, we're considering turning a page.
Anything on forty-seven?
Yeah.
Yep. Is that what you said?
I'm turning the page.
To forty-seven or beyond?
Forty-eight and forty-nine.
Everyone's good with forty-seven or moving on to forty-eight?
Probably depends on how you have them in your binder.
But he's already turning, yes.
I have nothing written on this page.
It's funny, I wrote food trucks in here, okay?
Forty-nine. Are we on to, uh, chapter seventeen oh eight, public and semi-public zone? Is this a good place to leave off?
Probably a good place to start.
I'm sorry, back on forty-nine.
That's okay.
Back, go back. We passed it already, Tim. Too late.
Ding. It's, I, I don't quite understand why there's so much more setback with industrial than there is with commercial. Is it just that there's so much more going on in these buildings, or? But, I mean.
I think it's the nature of the
I mean, yeah.
Operation.
If, if, if it's industrial, industrial.
Materials that are being used along with.
Between the two buildings, one of them, and if it's commercial, they can be up against one another.
Well, you have to kind of remember what they're what they're doing, you know, I mean, they
Okay.
They could be, they could be using hazardous materials.
Yeah, yeah. They might well be.
Using things like fire.
Yep.
And they use their side yards.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Is that the same as we have currently?
I, y- yes. It is.
It's not something we're getting a lot of.
No.
Okay, so are we finding a good spot to leave off that?
Okay, so are we finding a good spot to leave off that? We've only got fifteen minutes.
We can do it. I don't know if I was half asleep, but I have not written much on these pages. Page fifty four is the last page before we get to a whole new subtitle.
Oh, there we go, okay, let's finish up then, thanks Julie, keep moving.
Anything on page fifty or fifty one?
Going on, no.
Page fifty two and fifty three.
Just like that.
Page fifty four.
No.
I don't have anything either.
Okay.
I, should we look at the overlay zone for airport, we have very little say over it anyway, so. Maybe we can do it quickly.
So.
I mean, I don't, I don't say anything in there because.
No. Just a little overview.
I have a, I I couldn't quite. Make the. Airport overflight zone and the HL.
So.
Zone.
Let me explain. So obviously, in current code, we've got the two different overlay zones. And um, the the AO. Um, airport overflight zone applies to lands that are identified. In the area of influence of the um, airport land use compatibility plan. And in addition to that, we've got an HL height limitation zone. And and these came into code at two different times. Um, so the height limitation, we initially thought just applied. Also to lands within this area of influence. But through further review, we found that it actually applied to other. Um, private airports that we had permitted elsewhere in the county. So um, what we did to eliminate the confusion of having two different overlay zones. Regulate one area, we applied the height limitation to the areas outside. Of the airport overflight.
And is that per?
Area of influence.
I have more to say about that section.
It sounds as if next time is the the.
Yeah.
Because I, on several of these overlay zones, I don't see, like, the airport overflight overlay zone. I don't see. Any place where it says on the zoning map. You'll see the airport overflight.
Well, that's because it's not on the zoning map.
Right.
It's actually, it's actually delineated on a map within the airport land use compatibility plan. So it's the compatibility plan that identifies the area, regulates different zones. And what can go on and occur in the different zones.
So it is an, it's an overlay zone in, in the sense, do we ever define overlay zone, that that sounds? It's whenever you have uh. Zoning designations for parcels, and then there's an additional layer. That's, that's the overlay zone.
Right.
That has its own requirements.
Right, it's, it's in addition to.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess just before we close, um, just in thinking about this, the airport overflight. Um, overlay zone, well, is identifying those. Areas that are subject to the ALUC, so your airport land use compatibility plan. Um, so that, you are kind of limited in that, and basically what you're saying is. You know, you, everything has to comply with that plan. And Gina took this overlay to the Airport Land Use Commission. Um, and Gina, they.
They made a consistency.
Substantial comments, right, they found this compat- consistent with their plan.
Yes, so they made, made bindings of consistency between our code revisions, which essentially are. Very minor in nature and not really substance. Um, in comparison to their plan, found uh, that they were compatible. Um, with, along with that exercise, we actually identified um, a number of parcels that were never captured with an overlay zone. So um, as part of the um, the zoning component to this whole thing. We are um, we are proposing to zone all of the properties within this area. Delineated area of influence with an AO overlay zone to make sure that all the lands in that area are captured.
So then, then it would be on the zoning map, right?
Well, it'll be on the zoning map in the form of the AO. Designation, right? So um, you're not gonna go to the zoning map and otherwise find the um, the land use. The, the airport land use um, zoning map, I forget exactly what they're calling it.
Details of the various.
Right, right, so they've got, you know, they've got this map and it identifies the different areas depending on. On the proximity to the airport, the further out you get, the different land use design, you know, allowances they have. Um, in respect to what you can and cannot do.
But is there a GIS Larry, I think I.
Well, no, there isn't, so G. GIS made a map for me, now we haven't rolled that into the GIS for the public. He made a map for me for purposes of identifying those properties, so I could maintain a property, an APN list. But I don't have a map that we've I, that we've otherwise put out on the GIS application.
Yet.
Yet, we we could, I suppose.
I mean, I think, is the question, I think that Commissioner Lottich's question is about will a person be able to know whether they're within an overlay zone?
Yes, because they will have the overlay zone applied to their base zone, that's how you know that something else applies.
We have maps that would actually also verify that.
So they could go online and somehow find out.
The airport plan is public information, it's out on our um, website. You can find it easily, or you can certainly come into the department. But all of these regulations point right back to, you know, the, the plan itself. And um, regulations through the FAA.
And maybe when we get to the HL zone, we can specifically say it does not apply to the whatever.
I believe it does.
It says it applies to private airports.
Right, private airports.
But it doesn't, you know. It doesn't specifically say it does not apply to the, whatever our name of our airport is here.
That's not a private airport, no.
But does everybody know that? Okay. All right, well.
So this applies to our real airport.
Yes.
Other thing applies to all our private.
Right, yes.
Is you. There's somebody above you for the HL areas, the HL areas, that's your own doing.
Right.
So, yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
I, I think we're, we'll start on page fifty eight, fifty, oh.
If we're not finished, we're certainly done.
As I say, I put a fork in me. So I, I don't think we have much to say about the overlay zones because that is what it is.
Well, that, that, there will be things, I mean.
Well, you, then let's talk about them now and get it out of the way, so we can start with. Environmental.
Okay, well, I may just, for, like, when we get to the mineral extraction zone, overlay zone, I.
Oh.
I, I didn't see where we actually established a zone in here, we've got.
I'm only talking about the airport overlay zone, we're done with that, then we're gonna start talking on the next item, which is environmental protection. Cuz that's gonna have. I meant that airport overlay. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's just sit through all those.
Nothing to see here.
Sorry for the confusion, I didn't. It wasn't clear.
Gotcha.
Thank you, everybody, let's get back to our agenda.
Thank you, Martha.
Yes, thank you, Martha. Commissioner reports.
Nothing.
Planning Director reports.
None, Madam Chair.
Then we are adjourned at two fifty five. Thank you, everybody.